Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. Thank you to those who are joining us here and online. For the record, this meeting is being held on November 5th, 2025 at 7:01 PM in the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And the live stream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new business is to be conducted after 9:30 PM and the meeting will end at 10:00. Let us begin with a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cory, would you please call the roll?
Nat Burke, here. Bernie Reigstad, Brian Zimmerman, here. Ron Day, here. Chairwoman Celeste Luciano, here. Vice Chairman Robert Otto, Councilman Mark Scott, here. Here, Get Bobbler, here. Christine Dunbar, here. John Freeman.
So before we begin tonight's proceedings, I would like to extend this board's congratulations to our newest councilman, Michael Sylvester. We look forward to continuing our working relationship with you. Now let us move into our public hearings. We have before us PB number 25737 Sparta Holdings LLC, 11 and 13 Aaron Way, Block 16001, Lots 16 and 17, ED Zone Preliminary Site Plan, carried from 9/17/2025. An extension of time to act, okay, was granted until today. So gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind joining us? Oh, okay. Yes, absolutely. Gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to remind you both, please utilize the microphones for recording purposes and for the people at home.
Thank you very much for your attention this evening. My name is David Gray. I'm an attorney at Gray Law Group. I represent the applicant. The applicant is Sparta Holdings LLC, the owner of the property located on Aaron Way. There's two lots, 11 and 13 Aaron Way. This is a, this is our second session on this preliminary site plan approval application. And there's been testimony back on, I believe it was September 17. And we are here continuing this evening. We, prior to this evening, some additional plans have been exchanged. Our professionals have met. We'd like to explain some of those changes. And we have, our engineer is here to testify about that. We expect that our architect will also testify this evening. We have our environmental consultant as well to testify. We have a representative of the applicant entity here to answer any questions. And I look forward to getting this presentation going. So with that, I will either turn it over to Mr. Simmons, as he normally gives an intro, or write to our engineer, Owen Dykstra, to present some information about the amendments to our plan.
I'm assuming as Owen's been duly sworn that he doesn't need to be sworn in again?
Yes, thank you. We're just reminding you, you're still under oath. Thank you.
Got it. Want to say something, Dave, or just?
Madam Chair and Board Members, I did have a meeting with Mr. Dykstra at our office to go over some drainage issues, parking, impervious coverage, that type of thing. And my suggestion, if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, it'd probably be more beneficial for Mr. Dykstra to outline the changes that they made in response to that meeting. And then if you want, I can go into more detail later on.
Sounds good. So Ms. Dykstra, just please hold the microphone up. Yeah, they don't catch as much as the others, so.
Got it, okay. As Dave said, we had a meeting about a month ago after the previous meeting on my birthday. Great night. So this time at least, we did have a lot of progress, me and Dave. We went through the meet, through the plans. We came up with a scenario that he was comfortable with. Dave had recommended we provide a layout that would keep us below a 50% impervious coverage, utilizing porous pavers at an 80% impervious calculation. So they kept only as 20% would be impermeable and the rest would be considered impermeable. So that result, this was Exhibit A1, what we had initially come up with. It was 154 parking stalls, which was far more than the applicant requires. So we went back to the drawing board based on that meeting. Put up the alternate plan. This was submitted, I just colorized this, so I'll label it.
Well, you were modifying A1 from the last meeting?
This is an alternate plan to A1.
So council, this will be A3? Great, great, thank you.
Yes.
Can I just ask the date of that, just to make sure we're looking at the same thing?
Sure, this is the alternate layout plan. It's dated 10/22/2025. It's the plan that was submitted to you. The only difference is we added some color, so when I see it. On the alternate layout, specifically reduces the overall pavement, pave surfaces significantly. We went from 154 parking stalls to 63 stalls. In Lindsay's assessment, she indicated that we were short parking and she had calculated, as she had calculated the office at one space per 200, we had looked at it as an industrial building. Industrial was based on the number of employees, four one per 500, and it was our option. I put together an exhibit of an alternate parking calculation to make sure we're compliant.
Mr. Engineer Dykstra, could you please speak? It's really hard because I was just listening to the previous session, but you have to keep it right below your chin so that the folks at home can catch every word.
Okay.
Oh, much better.
That one does.
Yeah, that one may not have been working appropriately.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna provide Exhibit A4.
Yes, please.
This is a Sparta Holdings LLC alternate layout parking calculation. I'll send them out to everyone, so everyone has one. Here's the actual.
Thank you.
Not good with a microphone?
I can do that for you, Owen.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so this exhibit is Sparta Holdings LLC alternate layout parking calculation. On our proposed plan, we have 63 total stalls provided. We get two bonus for having two EV spaces, so we have 65 total available parking space credits from an ordinance perspective. And the parking required, based on the office space of 2,282 square feet, at one per 200 is 11.4. So we've given 12 spaces to the office. That leaves 53 spaces for the warehouse. And we'd be limiting the employees in the warehouse to the 53 spaces. So that would make it compliant. And it eliminates the need for the parking waiver. As well, in her report, she indicated that she'd like a condition of approval that contained in there, so we would agree to a condition of approval that the number of warehouse employees would be no more than the spaces remaining after subtracting the office space requirement. So if the office space were to change in the future, you know, when the tenant actually shows up, it's shrunk or it's bigger, then the numbers would be adjusted accordingly. So utilizing the alternate plan and the parking calculations on Exhibit A3, the application now complies with all the ordinance requirements. We're requesting no variance relief or waiver relief for this application. At the September hearing, there was some discussion with regard to the intensity of the use. The intensity of the use is directly tied to the traffic, in my opinion, generated by the site. A traffic to impact statement was submitted as part of the application. That study was based on the ITE 11th Edition of Trip Generation Manual. The building per ITE is considered a warehouse, which is Land Use Code 150. And based on the calculations utilizing the ITE manual, the morning peak hour trips would be 33 total trips, of which two trips would be trucks. The evening peak would be 36 trips, of which two were to be trucks as well. The total daily trips for the site would be 159, of which 46 would be trucks. So it's a very low-impact use, in my opinion, based on the trip counts and the numbers. The State Highway Access Code sets a limit of 100 trips as where it becomes significant for in the peak hour, and we're significantly below that. Our morning, our biggest peak hour is 36 trips. So that's kind of the overview. I kind of will show you how we've made the modifications. We've moved the entrance a little bit to the east. The entrance now comes through the site. This area to the north and west of the building will be porous, porous pavers. And there's the darker gray is the pavement area, and the light gray is the concrete pads. We believe we have a compliant application at this point, and it meets the ordinance requirements.
Mr. Dykstra, I'm just going to ask a couple of clarification questions, if I may. Just to confirm, the applicant is not requesting any variance relief or waivers. That's your understanding, correct?
That's correct.
And to your knowledge, there's no covenants, easements, or deed restrictions that exist on the property, is that correct?
There's some easements, but they would not restrict this development.
And your office performed a survey on the property, is that correct?
There is one easement for the snow removal easement. We'd request that it be relocated, so it's not where our entrance is. If the township did not want to grant that, then they'd be entitled to push snow onto our driveway.
And could you just point out for the board where the existing snow removable, removal easement is right now?
Sure. This is Aaron Way on the lower portion of the map. At the end is our driveway. The slow snow removal easement is this area, immediately adjacent to the cul-de-sac. It'll, it's about a 35-foot deep area by about 50 feet wide. So it allows for, a cul-de-sac creates a lot of snow, because it's a big area of pavement, and it allows for a space to push off that snow. We have a lot of additional space where it'll just be lawn that we could move that to. So we'd request that we do that.
Additionally, what's on the south part, the south parcel to the bottom of the drawing there?
The southerly parcel is the township lot, which is a stormwater basin. So they theoretically.
They could push snow right there.
Push snow down that driveway.
And there was some testimony at our last hearing about this, but your understanding is where there's no request for outdoor storage to be utilized on the site, is that correct?
There's no outdoor storage proposed.
And again, with respect to the number of parking spaces and the number of employees, where the applicant is agreeable to a condition to limit the number of employees to, what was it, 63 total? Or 63 parking spaces?
63 spaces plus two bonus for the EVs, so we have 65 total parking spaces. So if you take off the office space, which is 12 or 14?
12, yeah, 53 and 12.
12, that leaves 53 for warehouse employees.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions for the engineer.
I did just want to mention the water line easement. There is a water line that runs through the rear of the property. Me and Dave had met. In that easement, it requires, if there's an issue with it, that the town relocates it. Dave asked for some additional easement so that if anything ever happened to it, they could come across instead of run parallel with the track, and we would be amenable to that.
Thank you, Mr. Dykstra.
So we will bring it to our professionals. Mr. Simmons, do you have anything to add to the meeting or that testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, as I indicated earlier, we did have a meeting at our office with Mr. Dykstra and his son and our staff. And in response to that meeting, we did repair the October 31st, 2025 report. And specifically, if I could draw your attention to the end of the report, on page, on page number nine, item 16, the alternate layout plan. When we discussed the application, we were, as Mr. Dykstra indicated, we were really looking at the number of parking spaces and the parking area and impervious coverage that it would generate, in addition to the stormwater requirements, and trying to get 50% or less impervious coverage so that it matched the township's ordinance and they didn't require any variance. So in response to that, the alternate layout that Mr. Dykstra just outlined to you is what we came up with, if you will. It does meet the, it's less than the 50% impervious, based on how we were treating the porous paver system that they're proposing to use, and based on their testimony and their interpretation of the current ordinance, that for an industrial warehouse, the choice is one per employee or one per 500 square feet of area. As they presented it, that does not say whichever is greater, it just gives you an option. So in my report, I, before this evening, I had it as 63 spaces for 63 employees, but because of change to the calculation as shown on Exhibit A4, they've changed that, taking into consideration the one per 200 for the office area. So what's listed on page 10 of my report for 63 employees, if the board would act on the application, that should be changed to 53, based on their testimony tonight. So based on the revised layout and the discussions we had as far as impervious coverage and storm drainage, we're satisfied in our office with what they came up with as far as meeting the township's ordinance from that standpoint. I also, we discussed the water main easement. My concern was, based on my conversations with Corey Long, the Director of Utilities for Sparta Township, that if, if the water main ever had to get replaced or relocated or repaired, it would be significantly more involved to try and do that underneath the railroad siding, and it would interfere with additional time and effort on the applicant's part. So what Mr. Dykstra was alluding to was, I said, it would be nice to have an easement where the township, if they decided to relocate or had to relocate because of damage to that main, they could basically go perpendicular to the exist or the proposed track to minimize the amount of area under the railroad siding, and then basically go parallel to it so that it was much easier construction for the township to undertake and less cost involved, less interference. That was the idea with that whole thing. That's the line that, if you'll recall, basically takes water from the Germany Flats wells and it pipes up to White Lake. That was a requirement of the water allocation permit from the DEP for that particular water main. So we were trying to get it set up so that A, it was ready if and when it ever had to take place and be constructed, and B, bless you, and B, so it didn't have to cause any inconvenience or conflict with anything the applicant had planned on their property. In other words, everybody was working together at this point before a shovel went in the ground, so it would be possible with a minimal amount of cost to the township and a minimum amount of interference to the applicant. So those were the main items that we talked about.
Great. Ms. Knight?
Yeah, I, I just want to call attention because on my report, it does say non-conforming for the parking. However, given Mr. Dykstra's testimony this evening and clarification on the number of employees, as well as putting that condition on approval, I would change that to conforming, given the ordinance and the number of employees being confirmed as well. So just wanted to clarify that, just so in case anyone does see that, there's no questions about it.
Yeah, real quickly, Mr. Gray, so as far as the statements and review by the board engineer and the board planner, they seem to be in line with Mr. Dykstra. I'm assuming the application is approved, I would put that the application would be subject to the analysis of the board engineer and board planner. I think that would be acceptable.
That is acceptable, sir.
And then just so the, it's clear on the record, we have the conditions, we're discussing limitation of employees as discussed on the record. There would also be the snow removal easement, which will more than likely be subject to the mayor and council approval, but that being understood with the specifications noted by the board engineer. No outdoor storage was discussed, and also water main easement as per the board engineer, and again, may be subject to the mayor and council. That's all I've noted. Thank you.
Okay, we will bring questions up to the dais. We'll start with Councilman Scott.
The, the number of employees, the limit on the number of employees that will go with the land, that will go with the property?
Well, the limitation is the, the resolution, and if, let's say there's a violation and the property owner does not comply, the zoning officer or the enforcement, zoning enforcement officer would give a letter to correct, and if they did not, there would be a summons that would go to the municipal court. My experience is when it's brought to property owners' attention, they do cure or address it. But, so does it, the approval runs with the property, the number if, but as far, it's not like a variance, it's not that that running with the property, it's a condition of approval. So it's more of a condition. Does it run with the property? Mr. Gray, what do you think?
In a way, it runs with the property, and I respectfully remind the board that when a tenant does come in front of this board, that the tenancy and their use would have to be approved by the board, and there would be another opportunity to vet who is going to be a tenant in this building in your town.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
No further questions?
Mr. Day?
Yeah, just one, one quick one, maybe two. Relative to the pervious pavers, is there any type of a maintenance plan that's required for those?
For, for a project like this, the applicant would prepare an operation and maintenance manual for stormwater, and that would, depending on the brand manufacturer that they have for that type of paver, that would be presumably included in that manual. And that manual would be recorded in the Sussex County Clerk's Office, and that way it's in the chain of title for the property. And as time went on, if this particular owner sold the property to XYZ Corporation, it would show up in the title search and they'd be made aware that, in fact, those maintenance obligations were present on this site.
Thank you. Last question, maybe more of a curiosity question, but, you know, so there's going to be a maximum number of employees for the site. So does that go into a lease, so there's no misunderstanding before this goes, I mean, how does, how do we flow that from this room to any potential applicant?
My respectful suggestion would be when a tenant comes before the board for approval, that it be addressed as a condition of use at that time. I cannot speak to the purview of contract of a lease between a landlord and a tenant. Seems to make sense, but most importantly, I think there needs to be a meeting of the minds between the landlord and the tenant, because the tenant's use is going to need to be approved by the board, and certainly the number of employees should be a topic of conversation. Okay, thank you. I will, I will say that it's common in commercial leases, certainly the ones that I prepare, that the tenant complies with all local zoning ordinances and laws, and as Mr. Poro correctly noted, if there was a violation, then your zoning enforcement officer could issue a notice of violation.
I'm just, I was just, my thought was just, how do we avoid even getting that far down the road?
Right, I, I think the practical aspect would be upon approval of the tenant.
Thank you.
Ms. Bulger?
So the facility operator will be the tenant? That's what you're looking for as a facility operator, to actually operate the railroad siding?
Right now, the expectation, and I say this because the applicant provided testimony at the last meeting, and we have an applicant representative here, is that yes, the site would be rented out to a tenant with the idea that they would be utilizing the rail and utilizing the building as warehouse storage. So that means that a tenant would be occupying this property. If the landlord chooses to occupy the property, they would be bound to the same conditions as any tenant, and I don't want to preclude the landlord from occupying their own building. But right now, the expectation is that a tenant would occupy.
If the landlord chooses to occupy, does he have active business with New York Susquehanna and Western Railway?
Yes, the, the applicant testified at the last hearing that he had extensive meetings, and I'm personally aware of this, with the president of the railroad and works with the railroad, currently has contracts with the railroad, provides maintenance and construction support with the railroad, and is an active, also has, owns other properties that are rail-adjacent, and is very familiar with the railroad. In fact, they work together even to find tenants.
Thank you.
Burke?
I, I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions.
I, I have a question. Looking at the table for the traffic flow that you went over with us, Mr. Dykstra, it says here that a traffic increase of 100 new peak hour trips could have an effect on operating conditions on adjacent roadways and intersections. I know that the folks that I have heard from, the public I have heard from, are really concerned about traffic, right? And the flow of traffic and even the pollution in the area, because the whole valley is kind of a bowl shape that traps pollution. But anyway, what I'm wondering is, is if something like, I don't know how you would enforce it, zoning, I guess, or somebody would have to enforce it, but if we could be assured that we wouldn't go over the 100 new peak hour trips as a condition, is that at all possible? Because we really don't know who is going to come into that facility and, you know, what traffic issues will emerge. So I feel like I need some guarantee. I think the public might want some guarantee on that.
I think the legal guidance respectfully is not appropriately to be testified about by our engineer, and I would defer to counsel for the board. And I would defer to counsel for the board as to being able to make traffic flow a condition. That being said, I remind the board that this site was designed specifically to utilize the rail. We have fewer parking spots because this is not a truck, trucking terminal, this is not, you know, a docking station. This is warehousing and designed to utilize the rail in a zone that was specifically designed for this by the township. And utilizing the rail in and of itself reduces trucks on the road, reduces the traffic. We have modified our plans to cut the parking in half, pretty much. So I cannot opine as to the legality of instituting a condition of traffic flow. I personally have never seen it, but Mr. Poro has more experience than I do in that area. But I don't know that it's something that the engineer should really be testifying to.
Yeah, it's an interesting issue. If you recall, we've had the issue with traffic, the case of Dunkin' Donuts, where the Dunkin' Donuts was in a strip mall and there was concern that that tenant would cause an increased traffic. And the board did deny the Dunkin' Donut case, went up on appeal and the appellate court said, look, if it's a permitted use, it anticipates traffic or it wouldn't have been a permitted use. We are the planning board, this is a permitted use before us. But very good question in that when we get the tenant here, we'd be able to look at that more closely. As far as tonight, the application seeks preliminary approval. So I think at this point, they have to comply with the law. So as far as traffic and the tenancy and the intensity, we can wait until the tenant for that.
Will the tenant need to come before the board?
Yeah, the applicant had said that it's anticipated.
I believe I did listen to that. And then the other thing I wanted just to confirm with you is the flow of goods. Is that coming from the train always into the warehouse and then being picked up by a truck and then moved out? Or is it also coming in by truck, being put in the warehouse and then going out by train?
That is a great question, one which it hasn't happened yet, so I don't know the answer. It's anticipated that legally it would go both ways. Some, some would come on truck, sit in a warehouse, ultimately go on a train car. Some would come off a train car, sit in a warehouse, ultimately leave, maybe go back on a train car, different one. And I don't want to limit the use of the rail coming in or going out. Sometimes, like I said, it comes off the rail, sits in a warehouse, goes back on the rail on a different train. So it's, it's hard to say without that tenant actually operating.
So the table that we're looking at, Table 1 on Page 3, is that, what is that an example of? Inflow or outflow or, or how does that work? Because I think if you had a lot of trucks coming in to pick up things, that would change the table values quite a bit.
Madam, may I ask if you are referring to our traffic impact statement that we had supplied? Or is that on the Neglia report?
This is the, this is Table 1 on Page 3 of the
That's on ours.
Traffic impact statement, Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineering.
Yeah, so this, this report is based on IT manual trip generations and it's a function of statistical analysis of existing similar type uses. So based on that, this is what you would anticipate in a typical warehouse. This excludes the, the train because the IT does not analyze warehouses with trains. So likely it would reduce the truck count below what's here, assuming that the train is used significantly. So I don't see it. These are, the values are created based on the IT statistics and these are actually overestimated based on, the IT manual has been updated since then and it actually reduces these numbers by about a third.
Thank you. Does our town have its own traffic engineer report? Do we have a traffic report coming from the town? Because I don't think I looked at that yet.
The traffic engineer review letter was dated September 12th, 2025.
Yeah, and he was present last meeting.
Yeah, and he was also present at the original meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So my sole question, actually based on that report, one of the things that we, I don't know if we had mentioned last time, but definitely want a, a answer on this one, this one, this time. So one of the, the elements here says tractor trailer stalls shall not be utilized as overnight quarters. Testimony required from applicant. So we just want confirmation that there's going to be no.
We confirmed that last meeting.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't have it in my notes. Thank you. Okay, so we will move to questions from the public for this witness.
Where is the impervious, where are the impervious pavers and what's going to be parked on top of them?
The impervious pavers are the parking areas up front and the driveways on the northwesterly side of the building.
That entire section?
Yes.
And in the last hearing, and I apologize if I missed the update, in the last discussion, in the last hearing, there was a discussion of banking spaces. Is that still in the plans?
We've eliminated the spaces.
Eliminated that? Okay. Okay, thank you.
One more quick question about the, the pervious pavers. What, what, what's the weight rating on those? I mean, in terms of parking? I mean, are we talking about just car weight or are we talking truck weight?
Truck weight.
Okay, that is all I have.
I had one question, Wes. At a previous town council meeting, we had a discussion about, you know, Route 15 being at its maximum. And I don't understand, I, I just wanted to ask the professionals, how does this, how does this addition of these trucks or these hundred, hundred vehicles at, at peak, peak times, how does that relate to the fact that we've had traffic studies done that said 15 is at its maximum now? This is only to make it worse or this is to make it better? I, I'm not sure I either understand the variables here.
Well, I think you have a situation where it's going to add additional traffic, no question about it. I think the, the significant part about this location and this particular development, when I say development, Aaron Way as commercial area, it's going to come to a T intersection with White Lake Road and then it's going to go from White Lake Road in all likelihood towards Route 15 and it's going to end up at a signalized intersection. So as far as the traffic being able to be controlled safely at that intersection, you're with a traffic signal, so that's going to help that situation. And then you're going to be going in all likelihood, south on 15, through another signalized intersection and then eventually onto the four lane traffic. Will it add more traffic? Yes. Is it a relatively quote unquote, short distance to the four lane section of 15? Yes, relatively. And that's basically the answer. Do I think they're going to adjust the traffic signal timing or what have you just for this particular operation? I don't think so. But again, I think from a safety standpoint, going through signalized intersections as opposed to local municipal streets under Sparta Township, other than Aaron Way, this is what it was set up for. And I, I, I would anticipate, especially with the fact that they're probably going to be box trucks or tractor trailers predominantly, I think the outline of where the vehicles would be going, in my opinion, is probably the safest way to get them to the four lane section and then further down below, depending on where the destination of the trip is.
Okay, so this is already obviously a, a property in a, that's being proposed in a already approved use.
Yes.
So is that to say that we can no longer take traffic into account? When we say that Route 15 is at its maximum, we just have to ignore that because we've alre, this has already become zoned as a, as a industrial space?
If I could, I'd, Councilman, you have the ability of time, place and manner. So let's say the tenant, I think we saw this last month with the Mediterranean deliveries on off hours. So there's areas of which you can help. Let's say you wanted to do a special assessment to widen the lanes or put in a light. Those are methods of generating revenue that the Aaron Way commercial property owners, again, a special assessment on Aaron Way, if you put a traffic light there because it's impacting just them. I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying there are mechanisms that you can address. But as you had said a couple of minutes ago, that it is a permitted use in a recognized zone. So again, time, place and manner is your power. And we'll see it with the tenant. That's what we're really.
That's what you have to wait for.
I also believe the schoolmakers had mentioned last time that they were going to find the appropriate tenant for this facility and they're going to do their due diligence to make sure that happened.
And we also had Brian and Dola here at our last meeting to opine on traffic issues. That was, that was the whole purpose of having him here, was to, to testify or assert what needed to be asserted with regard to traffic flow, which I think was the result of how we, you know, came to reduced parking and, and circulation overall. I have no more questions of this witness. I think we can move on.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, if I may, I would like to introduce Richard Saunderson, our architect, to the board and have him sworn in as our next witness.
Mr. Poro, if you would mind?
Yes. Saunderson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give is the truth, all truth and not the mother truth on the penalty of perjury of self you've got?
I do.
Good. And can you spell your last name, please?
Sure, Saunderson, S as in Sam, A U N D E R S O N.
And your professional address, please?
545 Eighth Avenue, New York, New York.
And you currently hold a New Jersey license for an architect?
I do.
And it's in good standing?
Yes.
Have you ever testified before the board before?
Yes, I have.
And based upon those representations, the chairperson, I'd recommend you accept Mr. Saunderson as an expert in architectural planning.
So accepted.
Thank you. Mr. Saunderson, I see you have some boards up on the, on the podium. If you could please walk us through the material boards and color renderings that you have.
Sure. So there are three boards that I would be presenting and I guess entering as exhibits. The first one is an aerial rendering showing the building from the southwest of the building.
Why don't we mark that as an A5, counsel?
A5.
A5, okay. The second board is a schematic floor plan, which shows the architectural layout of the building.
A6.
And the third board are rendered exterior elevations of the building, showing all sides of the proposed building.
A7.
So starting with the aerial rendering, I'll just give you a quick overview. Again, this is the view from the southwest corner of the building, looking at the building. The rear, of course, is the rail line and the rail access on the far side of the building. This is the approach from Aaron Lane or Aaron Road and the cul-de-sac existing at the end of the, of the roadway right now. The building is a single story building. It'll be a steel framed building with concrete, precast concrete exterior walls with punched windows. And you'll see further in the elevations that the elevation is articulated with the pattern of the panels as well as changes in color. Quick overview on the floor plan. Again, it's a single story building. The predominant use of the building is a warehouse, storage warehouse, with the accessory And the third board shows again, the, how the building looks like from the exterior as well as a cross section through the building. The building is designed to have a clear height on the interior of 36 feet, clear, which will result in a building with a maximum height of approximately 45 foot 11 above the zero zero elevation. Again, all sides of the building are precast concrete panels and articulated with the intent that it could be used by different types of tenants because there's no tenant at this time.
Mr. Saunderson, can you explain if, if rooftop mechanical equipment should be required, whether or not it would be screened or would it be viewable from the ground? Can you talk to that issue?
I could. I mean, generally in a, in a storage warehouse, many of them are actually ambient temperature, so they're not air conditioned. If in the event this building needed to be air conditioned, based upon the ultimate tenant, it would likely be an RTU, rooftop unit system. Those units can be placed away from the edge of the roof, usually at least one column bay in. And therefore, the, the parapets on the building, which where the, where the wall extends above the actual roof line, as well as the line of sight when you're within a few hundred feet of the building, would essentially naturally screen most RTUs, which are in the four, five foot high range. Or it could be screened if they were large units. But again, that's only if the building was an air conditioned warehouse, which is atypical.
Counsel, if, if the building does require a rooftop HVAC and assuming there was approval, would it be okay if the resolution reflect that if there is rooftop HVAC, will be screened as per the board engineer's specifications?
Mr. Poro, I would suggest to add, if it's viewable from the ground, because if it's centralized in the building, you might not be able to see it anyway, may not need to be screened. But certainly if it's viewable, we can agree that that would be a condition.
And even if it's not viewable, subject to the board engineer's review?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I would be satisfied if the board wanted that. Thank you.
Mr. Saunderson, can you flip back to A1 for a moment? Actually, you know what? Let's leave it on A2. Can you put A2 up for me?
We'll keep A2.
And if we take a look at A2, we see the office area is on the western portion of the building.
That's correct.
And on the eastern portion of the building, could you maybe just show where the rail would be roughly?
So the rail is on the right side of the drawing, essentially the east side of the building, where there would be a platform for rail access, essentially loading and unloading the rail cars.
I see. And those, those dock door drawings there, can you explain where the dock doors are on this building?
So facing south towards the So facing south towards the Aaron Lane or Aaron Road, there are two dock doors at the front of the building, or the south side of the building, and there are seven dock doors at the north side of the building.
And when we use this term dock door, this is actually defined in Sparta's zoning ordinance, Section 18-2.1. Are you familiar with the definition?
Yes.
Of dock door, can you read that for the record?
Sure, so a dock door is a type of sectional door used on the building facade above grade, which allows tractor, and I suppose other trucks, to basically load and unload their materials and goods directly into the building.
Okay, and how many total dock doors are on this building, again?
Nine total, two plus seven.
And how many sides of the building contain dock doors?
There would be two sides, the south side and the north side.
I see, so, there's nine on the north side, two on the south side, correct?
Seven and two.
Seven, I'm sorry, seven and two for a total of nine, okay. The architectural plans for this building is for what, it says warehouse right in the middle, is this a warehouse?
That's correct.
And are you familiar with the definition of warehouse as it's defined by Sparta Township in its ordinance, Section 18-2.1?
Yes.
Could you read that for the record, please?
The definition is a building where raw materials or finished goods are stored, with the primary purpose of the product, and typically have a low volume of tractor-trailer and non-tractor trailer vehicle traffic. Product is the primary use that contains dock doors on not more than one, and a partial second, I guess its facade is cut off, considered a warehouse, not a distribution center.
So, Mr. Saunderson, based on that definition, does this building meet the definition of a warehouse as it's defined by Sparta Municipal Ordinance, Section 18-2.1?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Saunderson.
We'll bring it to our professionals.
Madam Chair and Board Members, just a couple of questions. You had indicated that, other than the office area, the warehouse would just be at ambient temperature and air conditioning might not necessarily be required, what about heat?
Yes, there typically would be some heat in a warehouse, yes.
It'll definitely be heated, right?
Yes, correct.
So as a result of that, the, the units for heating would be on the roof also?
They could be, it depends upon the type of system that is put in. Sometimes they're actually wall-mounted or even on the ground outside if it's a heat pump type of system.
And if they were ground-mounted, you could provide landscaping screening?
I would say yes, that's a site civil question, but I think the answer is yes.
The answer is yes, and we would, we would certainly consent to that being a condition of any approval.
Okay, the other question at this point, do you know, and this may be a function of what the tenant is, do you know if there will be any generator or generators at the site?
There is no generator planned at this time for this building, there's no code requirement for a generator. If a tenant needed one, I think that's something that would be addressed at the tenant time.
So it's a function of the tenant?
Correct.
Okay, and the last question I had, if you could go back, please, to the aerial view, was one of the first exhibits, I'm not sure which one it is, A4, 5, whatever? Just so it's clear, and I, I don't know, but I just want to make sure it's clear for the board, was this rendering done before the number of parking spaces were changed? Or is it a reflection of the 65 some odd parking spaces?
That's a good question, and the answer is the rendering was done several months ago, before the parking change.
So I just wanted the board to understand that what they're looking at has more parking than what we're really talking about with the revised layout, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What was the old number of parking spaces, 100?
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Ms. Knight?
Just some questions regarding kind of the context of the neighboring properties and kind of the design and materials that you've chosen, and how those might impact the adjacent properties, or how they may be in line with them as well?
Well, there, there is one existing building to the west of this, which is another commercial building. I don't think it necessarily needs to mirror each other, they're actually quite a distance apart from each other. There's a good amount of open space between the buildings.
Yeah, sure, can you just kind of give more context regarding the, kind of the neighborhood, neighborhood area, what kind of the heights, the size of the property, the size of the other warehouses?
The other buildings that exist along this, this roadway are also all existing commercial and/or industrial buildings. I think this building would be of the same language or the same character as those buildings.
Thank you.
I have, I have nothing, thank you.
Hey, we'll bring it up to the tay. Ms. Dunbar, we'll start with you.
Could you just, with your finger, can you just kind of show us the flow of the, the truck traffic?
I could, it's really more of a site civil question.
I think maybe the other.
I can definitely show you, the, the main truck circulation would be around the back of the building here. So in other words, you would turn left before you actually get to the building, and then go completely behind the structure. The truck court is actually at the rear of the building, the farthest from the street. Okay, and adjacent to the rail.
And then the exit?
So, the exit is actually the same way, there's no runaround here, correct, Owen? There is a runaround? Okay, so that would be actually on your drawing. So, what we're talking about is this area here? Right here.
You used the mic, I'm sorry, thank you.
The truck traffic could come in the westerly entrance, but more than likely, the trucks are going to all come through the easterly entrance and around the back, do their turnaround here, and come back out this way. That's how we anticipate most of the trucks moving.
So, so the truck, I, I'm a little confused because, because originally, you said it would come in through the office and around, and then does it go around the eastern side of the building and then out by the cul-de-sac?
We anticipate the bulk of the truck traffic will come from the cul-de-sac into the site. We'll go to the truck area, and then we'll return that way.
So not where the office area is in that, the employee parking?
It's not precluded, but we anticipate that's the way we would direct traffic.
Thank you.
I have a question for, it's more aesthetics, when these precast walls, do they come with like colored cements, or do you put a coating on them? Or do you anticipate this building being like raw?
Typically, they are actually painted on-site.
Painted on-site?
Whether they're, and they could either be site cast or brought in on a truck precast.
Okay.
My guess on a building like this, it would be precast.
Precast, okay.
That's only an educated guess.
Thank you.
I have a simple question, what, what, what's the purpose of this other road going through the back of the building? If the, if, what we're, what we're saying is if the trucks are going to come in through the cul-de-sac, go to the right and go around, what's the purpose of that back road?
The ordinance requires two entrances for this use, so we have two entrances. And it's also a safety issue, if there's an issue, you can get around in another direction.
The other way, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bulger?
I'm not sure if this has to be part of your drawings, or where the bathrooms going to be?
That's really more of a detailed design question.
So that would.
Certainly, they would have to be within code-required limits. There's, for example, there's a 500-foot maximum travel distance to a restroom. And of course, the quantity would be based upon the ultimate population of the tenant.
Okay.
So the bathrooms are not laid out.
Right.
But they would have to be required by code. And that would, it's really a building design issue, not a site plan issue.
Okay.
Okay, just one question, and just more of a clarification on what was discussed before. So when I look at the ordinance for the ED zone, and it talks about HVAC equipment and other, other type of mechanical equipment, the ordinance requires that it be ground-based and screened. So if there is going to be a rooftop, I think right now, your requirements is, if there isn't any, is that correct, or? Where I can think, if you go to the ordinance, under Section 8 Design Standards and Paragraph 4.
Right now, we're not seeking approval for that equipment. And it'll be, you know, it, it certainly would be in compliance with the code, but we're not seeking approval for it at this time.
That's what I, so I just wanted to make sure it was clarified that we weren't approving rooftop equipment at this time.
I don't expect, Mr. Day, that there will be a need for this type of a warehouse to be air-conditioned. It might make a lot of sense to roof-mount it if indeed it's going to be, there's a need for it to be air-conditioned, unlikely. But we're not seeking approval for it now.
Okay.
And, and I think it's reasonable to have a condition that if it ever does come up, it must be screened.
That's where I was going, thank you.
But yes, we're not looking for the approval at this time.
Councilman Scott?
Yes.
So, I just want to be clear, the dr, the rendering that we were looking at is not the picture that we're looking at right here.
The, the site plan has changed and been updated, the building is essentially the same.
Okay, so now we have an exit and an entrance. One of those, the entrance, or as Mr. Dykes just indicated, the entrance would most likely be at the circle. And, and right now, the adjacent property owner parks his trucks in the circle. And, you know, I don't know if A, that's, that's legal, B, if we enforce that, or won't, will this add to? I mean, there are trucks being parked in that circle right now.
Yeah, there, there's a.
Had a concern of yours?
Yeah, it's a concern in that there's a township ordinance, I believe prohibiting, street parking on Aaron Way. That being said, I would imagine a conversation between adjacent property owners could resolve that issue. But there's an expectation that, that the trucks would come in through the entrance closest to the rail, towards the, on the circle, if you will, Mr. Scott, the way you said it.
Okay, thanks, I just want to go back for a second. It was Mr. Simmons that, that really said, six months ago, that 15 was at its capacity. You know, we have traffic that's backed up, making its right hand, right-hand turn onto White Lake Road. That, that intersection, that, that light. We've got the tractor-trails parking on the circle. At what point do we just say, you know, enough is enough? I mean, is this a master plan question? I mean, I asked Celeste as, as a member of the master plan committee, is this something we take into consideration when we, when we work on the master plan? I mean, it seems like the, the, the pen has left the, left the bar.
There is a circulation element to the master plan that will, that will address these issues. I mean, understand that Route 15, as much as we would all like to see traffic eased on, on that particular roadway, that's a state road, that's not something that we have any purview over. We would have to get the DOT in here to help us with those problems. Outside of that, when it comes to circulation in this particular site, relative to this particular application, there are two remedies for what happens on that cul-de-sac. One of them is a conversation in between the, the landowners, so that they can, they can come to terms. The second is, if they can't come to terms, then they contact the zoning office, and it's a matter of enforcement. So, we do have remedies in place to, to facilitate the property in, in terms of the actual site plan itself. But unfortunately, 15 is out of our jurisdiction, it's out of our hands, that's a Department of Transportation issue. Even though we'll try to address it, once, once we work on the master plan and, and see what we can work through with the Department of Transportation, once suggestions are made. But until we get to that place, these are the issues that we're going to have to continue to deal with. That's why completing the master plan process is so important, and why I started that process two years ago.
All right, so that goes back to the question, does the master plan encourage additional traffic in this area? Or is it trying to change the, the area so that it has less traffic?
The circulation component will address whatever issues that are there, and then, once we get to the point where, you know what, I will, I will let you continue.
So the circulation element, so aside from, not speaking about this application, just speaking about master plan, the circulation element will detail areas where there are issues with significant traffic, areas where there are common accidents, it'll identify issues within the township. A master plan, though, the circulation element is not a regulatory document, so that is what you base your regulations off of. So writing something within your master plan will give you kind of the blueprint to create ordinances to change that. So, looking at the circulation element and the land use element, you maybe will identify uses that are not appropriate, or that are going to cause higher traffic that may not be appropriate in areas where you've just seen that there are heavier traffic patterns. So that's kind of what we'll get from the master plan, and that's where you'll start kind of creating your ordinance amendments, based on those assumptions from the master plan.
Okay, thank you, I didn't mean to sidetrack us, I just wanted to, you know, ask when enough is enough, thank you.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, I will open it up to the public for questions for this witness.
Jenny Olson, I'm sorry. Jenny, Derek's tapped into Sparta, I don't know what, that wasn't good. Holy crow, that's my maiden name. I've been married 35 years, anyway, so, just a couple, you should be worried about me. This might be for Lindsay, but while we have the architect here, what are the campus-like setting elements of this design, as required in the ordinance?
Microphone, please?
It is set back from the.
And maybe if we're looking at the rendering instead of the.
So the, the structure is actually set back from the public roadway, and then there's a fair amount of open space and landscaping between the roadway and the actual structure. And again, there's, there's also a good amount of open space, clear of the building, between this building and the neighboring property.
And, I'm sorry, continue, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And that's it, again, then this, of course, this landscape design is not the ultimate design, this is for the, for the rendering. I'm sure the landscape architect will do a more detailed planting plan.
Are there architectural elements that should be seen in this? Or the construction methods that have been described, is that sufficient to satisfy that requirement?
Yeah, I think given the context of what's the neighboring properties as well, which are fairly all consistent in the industrial setting, I think that what has been described by the architect this evening is in line with kind of the context of the, the surrounding uses, and the architectural details that they've given this evening, I think, are in line with the design of an industrial warehouse.
Thank you. Will there be a new, you did address briefly the rail siding, and maybe this isn't for you, but I have a couple of questions about that. Will there be a new siding added for this facility?
Yes, we had gone over that at the last hearing.
Sorry, okay.
There's a siding being added to attach to this building.
And how does this building, as it's designed, how does this, how will there be interaction between the building and the rail?
The rail is attached to a platform, the siding is adjacent to a platform that they can access the rail cars.
So the platform will come out of the back of the building, or what, the facade of the building that is adjacent to the rail, and then? And then, because all the trap, all the truck doors or the, the doors are on the ends?
Yeah, Exhibit A1, this was our original plan. This one.
Right.
But the, the beige colored area is the loading dock where the rail is.
Okay, so the, from the loading dock, you're saying there are, there is ingress and egress into the building?
There's doors.
There are doors. Okay, I didn't understand that there were doors there. Thank you for clarifying that. And how far is the rail from the building?
Approximately 25 feet.
Okay, thank you. And then this, this again may be back to Owen. I'm sorry, I'm, but the, this is a discussion of the, of the pavers. Because I just want to make sure I have the right number here. Eighteen, this is in the ordinances, design ordinances, land use ordinances, eighteen dash three point four. Provisions applicable to both planning and zoning. And this is under definitions J, section J six. Impervious surfaces shall mean any structure, surface, or improvement that reduces or prevents absorption of stormwater, excuse me, stormwater into the land, including, but not limited to porous paving, paver blocks, gravel, crushed stone, decks, patios, elevators, blah, blah, blah. So how does the plan to have porous pavers align with the definition of impervious surface in the code?
What section is that? Is that in the?
That's in eighteen dash three point four. Provisions applicable to both planning board and zoning board of adjustments. Under section J six definitions.
Yeah, I think we went over this last hearing and it was.
I didn't hear a discussion, a full discussion of.
Yeah, the porous pavers are more permeable than the existing surface. And that's the definition. If you get into the definition, that's how it's defined.
Okay, because that's not in here. I'm just reading you what's in, what's in the ordinance.
The ordinance definition of impervious coverage specifically reads, I mean, I don't have it.
It says, I just wrote it to you, but not limited to porous paving, paver blocks, gravel, and so forth.
Correct.
So you're saying that what you're proposing is in line with, and Mr. Simmons agrees, that what you're saying, the impervious pavers, the pervious pavers are not in contradiction to the impervious as the defined in the ordinance. Mr. Simmons, I guess it's a discussion for him. Certainly, it is eighteen dash three point four. And the title is provisions applicable to both planning board and zoning board of adjustments, all the way down in J six definitions. That's all my questions. Thank you. I can show you where I am right here. J six. My mistake, it's K six, I think. Yes, K six definitions.
While they're looking at the definitions, if I may, basically, the 20% that the paver system was giving credit for, for being porous, was in line with our reading and understanding of the current DEP stormwater regulations as far as this type of treatment for a surface under the best, what they call the BMP manual, the Best Management Practices Manual. That's why we, we had a discussion at our meeting. And Mr. Dykstra agreed to use the 20% as the porous part and the 80% as the impermeable part of the paver. So I'm satisfied that was in line with what we were discussing at our meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we can move on to your next witness.
Thank you. And for our next witness, I'd like to present David C. Krueger, our environmental consultant from Environmental Technology, Inc., to be sworn in.
Krueger, will you raise your right hand, please? Yousally swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury. Your so hope you got.
I do.
Name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Sure, David C. Krueger, K R U E G E R.
And your professional address, please.
460 Main Street, Chester, New Jersey.
Okay, council.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. You provided a report, copies of which were supplied in connection with this application dated August 29, 2024. Can you, can you address, can you address this environmental impact statement that you've provided?
I'm sure. We prepared the statement based on the township checklist for preparing same. Went through all the existing conditions, the impacts of such. I can kind of give a summary of, as you, as already been pointed out, the site has been, most of it has been used for agriculture, was recently planted with corn this year and I believe the year before that. In general, from an environmental standpoint, the lot is was chosen for good reason to be this kind of a use because there are not any critical areas on the site for environmental. There's no wetlands, there's no transition areas, there's no regulated waters within proximity to the site. So I think in general, this development was, was picked out for a reason when this was, when this was planned out to be developed in this way. And also in proximity to the, you know, to the roadways that are nearby. But the site itself does, does not have any, does not contain the environmentally sensitive or critical areas in itself, so.
So, Mr. Krueger, based on the methodology, method, methodology accepted by the DEP and the studies that you have performed, there are no areas within the site classified it as wetlands or a transition area. Is that correct?
Correct. The nearest water body is White Lake. It's about 350 feet from the northern corner of the site, but most of the site is much further away from that. And the development area is over 700 feet from that.
You mentioned something, Mr. Krueger, about environmentally sensitive areas. And I happen to be from this area. I'm familiar with the groundwater in this area and the aquifer underneath the ground that is relatively close, the Germany Flats. Aquifer, can you speak a bit to that and how this site sits with relation to the underground aquifer?
Yes, well, this was also pointed out in Mr. Simmons' letter that the Germany Flats was there. And basically, the state has a wellhead protection zone for the Germany Flats well. This site is actually considered in tier three, so they have different tiers. And it basically is set up for time of travel. So for instance, how long it potentially would take anything that gets into the groundwater to reach the wellhead. So in tier three, this is basically a 12-year time of travel. So the point being that while it needs to be protected, that it has a longer period for dilution and for attenuation of anything that might get into the groundwater. But at the same time, I believe the applicant has agreed that they would comply with the requirements for not storing or having the use of certain hazardous materials that are on a list. The township also passed a resolution in 20 about adopting these restrictions for this zone that they could not allow these types of chemicals and uses to be on the site. So I think the applicant is totally on board with not allowing that. And that, of course, would also be looked at again when a site plan for this specific site was presented to ensure that there was no use that was contradictory to those restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Is there anything in your professional opinion that negatively affects the, the site with respect to wetlands or environmental impact in your professional opinion?
No.
I have no further questions for Mr. Krueger.
We will bring it to our professionals.
Madam Chair and Board members, Mr. Krueger pointed out the main item that I had in my report, item number 13, with regards to the Germany Flats area and the wellhead protection area. And he did touch on that and the restrictions against hazardous materials. I believe in other applications for site plans that we've had before the board, there's also been a condition put in any approval that the board might consider that there be no floor drains in this type of building where inadvertently some hazardous materials could be dumped into the floor drains and either discharged towards the stormwater system and/or towards the septic system. So I would recommend a condition like that if the board was going to act favorably on the application, be incorporated into the condition. The other item that has come up in the past based on recommendations from the previous township engineer on site plans, because all, a lot of the storm drainage in this site and this overall development ends up in the stormwater basin at the end of the cul-de-sac, is that a sump be constructed in the last inlet before it's discharged into the township stormwater system so that any stormwater and material that gets into that basin at that point could be tested in order to determine, God forbid, if there was some hazardous material discharged, which particular lot it came off of. And I believe I discussed that with Mr. Dykstra at our office. And I believe they're in favor of that or in agreement with that.
Yes, the applicant consents to both of those conditions referenced by Mr. Simmons.
David, how would you describe that, the drainage, the last part for testing purposes?
The last part?
Yeah. How would I word that?
That a sump area be constructed in the last stormwater structure prior to entering the municipal storm drainage system to facilitate any soil and/or water testing of the materials in that basin that may be necessary.
Thank you.
I have no comments.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, we will bring it to the dais. Councilman Scott?
Where's the septic system going to be here?
Owen can show you exactly.
Okay.
Nope, you're still on duty.
The septic is proposed to be on the westerly end of the property.
That would be underneath pervious or impervious?
It's under lawn.
It's, it's, it's under, it's under pervious coverage.
Pervious.
Pervious. So water would flow from the runoff of the parking lot through the pervious coverage down towards that septic system.
The septic system is at the highest part of the lot.
The high, okay.
No, no, it just, it's for the, obviously, the effluent from the, from the bathrooms that will be the facility, right?
Yeah, it's a septic system for the people utilizing the facility.
Right, totally separate from the stormwater.
It wouldn't be for, for chemicals being poured down the drain or something like that.
Well.
Septic and stormwater are two separate systems, right?
The septic is from the facilities.
This is for the toilets, essentially. So, I mean, yeah, theoretically, right. As long as no one's putting anything in the toilet, you're fine.
In tier three, that's, could you tell me, explain to me what that means? Does that mean?
In other words, what, the tier three area is, it's based on how long it's, based on the models, it would take for the water and anything in the groundwater to reach the wellhead. So in tier three, you're basically on average about 12 years. So it's like 10 to 15 years. We're probably in the middle or the outer section of that. And the point being that, and this is what's discussed in their model and in their reports, if, you know, there was something that got into the groundwater, you've got a lot of time to ameliorate that situation. And it's also, has more time to dilute and to be attenuated with other groundwater. So you're not right, you're not in that close zone to the wellhead. You're on the outer edge of it. You go a little further north and you're completely out of what they consider the wellhead protection area, so.
So this area, this area, Aaron Way, and excuse me, I don't know the answer. Is this going to be, there's going to be no red label chemicals here, right?
Yeah, there's a list and that, those chemicals cannot be, you know, not supposed to be stored or used on site. I think there are some for certain materials. There's exceptions that the board can give, but that would be during a site plan review for certain limited things if it was in a certain use or needed for that.
Yeah, when the tenant comes in, if they have any of those issues, they'd have to go through that.
Right, but unless it's approved, otherwise there's a list that would not be allowed to be used on the site. It's quite a lengthy list of things.
Okay, and the, and the rail cars that are going to be parked here, they would not have red label, red labels on them, right?
On our rail siding, correct.
Excuse me?
The ones on our rail sightings that we can control, yes, they would not.
Because across the street, we have the same regulations and we have red labels over there. But we don't seem to enforce that. But I just want to know how this is going to work out here. So, under your control, you won't be allowing red, red labels on there?
Correct.
Great, thanks.
I have no questions.
I just have a quick question regarding the septic system. What's the, what's the size of the septic required for a property this size? And does it matter who the tenant is?
With storage, no.
No.
The function is a function of the number of employees on site.
It is a, it is a number requirement on the number of employees? Is that what you said? Yeah.
15 gallons per day per employee on site and five gallons per visitor. It's the function and.
So it goes, so that would go with the applicant, right?
We will design it based on the size of the building and the available number of employees. And based on that, we'll get up to the health department.
Okay, so if we design it for, what did we say, 53 employees?
Yes.
And somebody came in with 70 employees?
They'd have to get a new permit and they'd have to come back here because they'd be over your threshold.
Okay, so that would be a condition, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I have a few things. All right, well, I too am very concerned about a few things. One thing I'm sure you're aware of is this is an aquifer, a superficial aquifer. And it has absolutely no protection at all except for what we give it for our drinking water. And I think that that is critical for all of us to, to keep in mind because what we have going on here is we have cumulative effects from all of the development concentrated in this area. And when you say that it's a 12-year time of travel and you talk about attenuation, there's really no attenuation for PFAS. They're going to be in our aquifer and they're going to be accumulating. And attenuation. And attenuation is only as good as the concentrations that are coming into the aquifer if they're less. If they're more, then pollution will build up through time. So I'm very concerned that this is not being emphasized in our discussion because, and I'm sorry that I didn't mention it a year or so ago when we were talking about a 40, 40,000, I believe it was, square foot, smaller warehouse down Aaron Way just a little bit. I guess I didn't really see this other development coming, but, but we really have an opportunity to rethink what we're doing to this area with this development here because it is going to add a considerable amount of potential for, for pollution here, even though you have graciously put in the, the pavers and arranged, you know, that to cut back. I can't stress how critical this area is. So that was one thing that really popped out on me at first, and are, are you aware, I'm just reading from, you were given the Environmental Commission suggestions, I'm just following through on some of those now. And they, we are concerned, of course, about several things, and that is a nearby, the wellhead protection area and also the category one stream that's on the north, northwest of the site. Concerned about the lake, the White Lake there, receiving, if you're pumping from the superficial aquifer to the lake, then the lake will be receiving through time more contaminants. So that was something that, you know, is out there for us to really think about. There's two rivers nearby, there's the Pollenskill River, this is actually the headwaters of the Pollenskill River, this whole area that drains through the other side of 15, and it, it goes out to the Sunset End Road and forms a main channel. So anything that we do to our aquifers there, it's a complex aquifer, I know, there's, there's a lot going on there, but has a potential of sending pollution downstream to Lafayette, our neighbor, our good neighbor. This is also the exact site of the connection between the Walkill River watershed, which flows northward to the Hudson River, and then of course the Pollenskill that flows out to the Delaware Basin that supplies drinking water for 5 million people. So all of these things should be in the back of our mind, in the front of our mind right now since we're looking at this, you know, application. We made a request and I believe that there was a little bit of a discussion about the lighting situation and that we recommended 3,000 Kelvin or less in lighting, but there was a safety issue and you felt that it was, 4,000 would be the safest lighting, perhaps a compromise could be reached on that. Really impressed by the list of native plants, and the owner, I believe, discussed how it would be a beautiful looking property and with native plants. When I drive down Aaron Way now, what do I see? I see barberry, I see the flame bush, I don't see anything that I think we recommended. You know, they're just, and there are alternatives like the Virginia, oh, there's a Virginia sweet spire plant that gives a red foliage. So I would really stress that we need to really take care of this area. I don't know whether it'll ever be anything close to a campus-like setting that our master plan suggested originally, but we need to have some way of insurance, I would hope, that you would follow through on our wishes on native plants there because that also is going to attenuate a lot of the pollution, right? I don't think that was mentioned in the, the report, but that's going to, it's going to take in a lot of the pollutants and prevent them from going down to our superficial aquifer we're all trying to protect here in our community. I just had a, a thought about noise, community impact. I did visit Trafalgar area, I don't know if there's anybody here from that community that will be up against, but greater than 500 feet from the railway. And I was concerned about the noise because I know that there's a lot of metal-to-metal screeching when you talk about rail cars grinding together. So I was hoping there'd be somebody here from that community that might want to bring that, that item up, but I'd like your input on, on the banging of the rail cars coming through there. What else? And one of the concerns was if there is an extended warehouse development being prepared for an adjacent area, I don't, this is part of the context of our application, I know, but, but this is what I'm concerned about because this is the accumulation of impact and effects through time with the increased development of that area. And what else? Yes, that's, that's it.
Christine, I apologize. So you just went through a lot of information. Can you, can you translate how, how that, those questions should be answered by the applicant?
I just would, I would just like your reflection on it because we have an expert sitting in front of us that is, you know, is an environmental engineer type of a person, and these are concerns that we have. And, and if you have any, you know, calming solutions to our concerns, you know, that would be great. And I just wanted to say this because this is something that we need to keep bringing to the forefront when we have, have these applications in terms of environmental concerns.
I'm going to try to take what you said and quantify it into some questions, if I may.
Yes.
For Mr. Kruger, our environmental consultant. Mr. Kruger, one of the questions that Ms. Dunbar had was there's an aquifer nearby with no protection. Can you please speak to the protections that are there for the aquifer, the laws that are in place that protect the aquifer specifically with respect to wellhead regulations and how this property is impacted by those specific laws and how we're following those laws?
Right. It just, okay, yes, so obviously the septic system is being designed in accordance with all the septic standards and is tested and has to function properly based on the amount of flows so that by the, by the time the water goes through the groundwater, it is, it is, it is acceptable and meets the standards. There's a stormwater system that's been designed to meet the stormwater regulations, and that is set up so that you are minimizing any, any pollutants being transferred to the groundwater. We've agreed to not allow a list of certain hazardous chemicals and other chemicals to be used on the site to, to eliminate the chance of any of that getting into the groundwater. So it's following all of the standards that the state would require of us in this situation. It's, it's exactly following what they acknowledge is required in a wellhead protection area.
Mr. Kruger, Ms. Dunbar raised a concern about a C1 stream, a category one stream on site. Can you speak to that?
There's no category waters on the site or within 300 feet of the site, and none of our, none of our stormwater system is draining towards White Lake anyway. It's all controlled on the site. It's going into infiltration system on the site and also to an off-site infiltration system, so.
Ms. Dunbar raised a question about lighting. We were proposing 4,000 nits or Kelvin, nits?
Kelvin.
Kelvin, and Ms. Dunbar suggested 3,000 maybe a compromise. Mr. Kruger, I don't believe that was referenced in your report at all.
Not that kind of detail.
As to light, that would be a more design-specific as we get closer to the actual design standards, and that could be addressed. I think the only comment was the safety of the people there.
That was brought up by Mr. Dykstra. I mean, inside of the warehouse, of course you have to have as much lighting as possible, but we're concerned also about the migration of all sorts of wildlife through our area since we're part of the Atlantic Flyway.
And, understood, understood. And I think there's going to be another opportunity to also get into the specifics about lighting and the outdoor lighting and how it could impact the environment.
Council, if I could recommend if the board so chose to approve, if we put a condition, I'm looking at the August 29, 2025 Sparta Environmental Commission suggestions, three suggestions on here, if the applicant would use best efforts to utilize 3,000 Kelvin or less lighting. And another point was if the applicant would use best efforts to plant in the bottom of the basin, and another category, if the applicant would use best efforts to plant native plants, would that be a condition the developer would be comfortable with?
Yes, and when we got the Environmental Commission reports and those recommendations, I sat with the applicant, went over those, and you heard the applicant's testimony with respect to the native plants. All those conditions can be agreed upon by the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Kruger, can you, can you speak to water usage on site? Was another question that came up.
Right, so the, the site is on public water, right? We're taking, we're taking the water out of the public system. There's no well or anything.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not affecting the groundwater on the site or impacting the recharge on the site based on the stormwater system and the design.
I have a couple more things.
Can I just interject on the public water? You're going to need to heat the water. Is it possible maybe to consider using solar hot water? Because I read in your report, you mentioned something about under energy, you said, you know, solar might be a possibility.
Can be explored, right, there's, yes. It's probably not part of this approval, but can certainly be considered on a forthcoming site plan.
I had a, that on my list also. You know, our buildings out there, there's no solar panels on them, you know, and it's, it's a shame that we can't encourage that within our community.
Mr. Gray, if I was to put best efforts to utilize solar panels if applicable.
Just one thing also, just to clarify, so the only hot water is for literally warm water in the sinks. It's a 50 gallon like you would have in your house. It's pretty minimal. Yeah, it wouldn't probably make sense. I'm sorry, I wasn't quite following.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying explore.
Yes.
No objection.
Right, yeah, I don't know why that is, there's such a negativity about that whole entire area getting on board with solar energy, but that, some people think they're ugly. I think they're efficient, and I think they, they help our, our air and our weather and our climate. So, I mean, we all have to do our little part, even our township, in getting on board with that, I would think. Somebody mentioned electric or a generator, if they needed a generator, would that be an electric generator, right? That wouldn't be a, a gas generator. So if they needed the heating, I mean, that was brought up.
There's no generator proposed at this time, but it would be most likely natural gas.
Okay. And what else? Oh, did I mention the SuziQ fuel? The New York Susquehanna and Western Fuel? So the engines run on, they're not electric trains, right? So they've got to have some, carrying some sort of fuel load. And we don't have anybody from the railroad here to ask about the safety of, of that, but I would be concerned that we have a, trains coming through with a fuel load in this very fragile area we're trying to protect. To your point, same rail line, 2013, we had a derailment there and carbon dioxide was released. So it's, so it's not. It's not, you read about it all the time.
Right.
Yeah, so we have to protect this, this water source. So that's a major concern. Any comment on that?
Well, the Federal Railway Safety Act of 2025 would basically preempt our ability to tell the railway what, what and when, what types of trains they're using and when they're using them. I really don't think the applicant is in a position to speak to that, either himself or through his professionals.
But it is a possibility that an accident could, could happen there, and there could be a major catastrophe spillage of the fuel that the engine uses.
I, I cannot give an opinion on that myself, but.
A remote possibility, a risk, a risk that we would have to take, yeah.
That increased, you know, if, if this was a facility that did not use the rail and used more trucks, it would be more likely that trucks would get in an accident before a rail car.
Given.
But that certainly doesn't minimize any concerns that these are very heavy things, you know, trains are used to transport very heavy things, very long distances. That's the benefit of utilizing the rail, and that's, you know, what the concept is for this warehouse.
Okay. One, one last thing that I have is that I was wondering if our environmental consultant consulted the Rutgers Climate Change Center for climate resilience, which needs now to be built into our townships in terms of construction of this building and considering this site. Because we all need to be thinking in that direction now from, from, from this point forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing what our master plan has to say about that because it's a, it's a critical issue, and I would hope that, that you took a look at that because they have advisement for inland areas. As we know, you don't have to be at the ocean to be concerned with the impacts, you know, from any type of extreme weather events, right? Look at what happened in Vermont, in Plainfield, Vermont, look at what happened in North Carolina in the woods. So nobody is exempt from the impacts of extreme weather events, and we all need to keep this in mind in our design of our buildings and our master plan, which I'm looking forward to, to reading, yeah. So was there any work done on looking into resilience for buildings or, or this area from the Rutgers Climate Change Center?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, just a, just a suggestion, Ms.
I think it's a very valid suggestion to look at that. I'm curious whether cast concrete buildings would be impacted in a certain way, but certainly something that really should be taken into consideration. Because I don't think anybody wants to be impacted. Because I don't think anybody wants to be impacted by extreme weather events, which unfortunately.
Or flying buildings around, you know, in, in extreme wind events like we're going to be having supposedly, when is it? Is it tomorrow night it starts or tonight? Do, does our, our town engineer have any comments on, on resilience, building and resilience for these warehouse applications in terms of climate change?
I think in a situation like this, the applicant's going to have to ultimately go to the construction department and meet all the current code requirements, both on insulation for energy efficiency and for wind load to make sure that for this particular area, they do meet all those requirements. So I think that will come into play with the construction officials' review of the plans for the building. And with regards to resiliency, I know one of the things that we refer to now because of the last 20 years or so with the number of hurricanes and major storm events, you want to make sure that the drainage systems and what have you are sized appropriately to provide the resiliency versus failure of any basin or what have you. So with the basin that they're discharging into for most of their drainage area, that is taken into consideration with the basin at the end of the cul-de-sac of Aaron Drive. With the other basin on this particular set of lots, because it's over the, beyond the original drainage area, Mr. Dykstra's office has included another infiltration basin and that one was sized appropriately as also. So with regards to storm drainage, I believe they have sized things appropriately based on the township's current ordinance to address that resiliency.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One more question for Mr. Dyker. What is, on the, if you look at the diagram there, the schematic, right a little bit north of where, farther north, yeah, what is that? Right, I thought that was a septic system. No, what is that? That's a drainage basin, okay.
That's the other basin that I was referring to.
The other basin, okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we are going to open it to the public for this witness. Okay, seeing none?
I have another question. You know, about 20 years ago, Lake Mohawk started requiring that septic systems get pumped every three years. And the lake quality got better and they continue to do that. Wouldn't it be a good idea for us to require septic systems get pumped in properties that are directly above the aquifer on a regular basis?
Do we have that?
We're trying to protect our water.
That's through the Health Department. And I happen to know that because I asked Dory. I asked Dory this when we were going through a previous public hearing and I specifically asked Dory residential homes and buildings less than like 5,000 square feet have to go again with the residential rules for pumping, but everything else goes according to the Sussex County Department of Health.
David, is that your understanding?
Basically, yes. And when the applicant, if it's approved, has to go to the county health department for a septic system permit, usually they'll have a set of guidelines and recommendations in that permit. And as best management practices for the preservation of the septic system, the applicant would want to do that as well. It's not necessarily applicable to this particular application, but for example, one of the things you run into with a restaurant are grease tanks, grease traps, and they'll make recommendations as far as the pumpage of those and inspections just to make sure you don't have a premature failure of the system because of grease going out into the disposal bed area, that type of thing.
I mean, but the point is that rather than leave it up to the county and their rules, maybe we should have those rules, right?
We're not a regulatory body, so that would probably be something that you would need to discuss at the council level.
Okay, but you're developing the master plan, maybe this, that's part of the master plan.
Lindsay?
So master plan's not a regulatory document. It's your blueprint of how you create your regulations. So while you could put it as something that could be considered, ultimately the governing body would be the one who adopts ordinances.
All right, we'll get on that, thanks.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind crafting a motion, I think we're at that point.
Just real quick, counsel, I was looking at the, the other documents from the other agencies here from the Department of Utilities on September 17, 2025. You may have addressed this already. It references the water connection detail. Mr. Dykstra, do you recall that?
Yes, I think we responded to all.
If, if you could, you're satisfied you'll comply with the requirements?
Yes.
And as far as the requirements also set forth by the fire prevention, you'd also comply with their requirements?
Yes, we negotiated with them already.
Okay, we, we're done with the public. Are you concluded, counsel?
Yes, we're concluded, thank you, sir.
Okay. Board, if you recall, we, you have before you an application on PB 25-737, Sparta Holding, 11 and 13 Aaron Way, Block 16001, Lot 16 and 17, ED Zone. Primary site plan is sought. This was carried from our September 17th and the extension of time was granted until tonight. Also, real quick, the tax assessor had said, they recommended the merging of the lots. I'm sure there's no objection to that.
No objection, we prefer to do that.
So again, tonight was a continuance of the hearing. Tonight, we had the testimony of the engineer for the applicant, Mr. Owen Dykstra. He talked about the prior exhibit A1 and the alternate exhibit. We talked about A3 tonight with its coloring depictions. We also, in the testimony, talked about exhibit A4, which is also Mr. Dykstra's office, the memo on the parking calculations. We then talked about conditions of approval. The stormwater maintenance plan manual would be provided. We also talked about the limitation of employees that's set forth on the parking calculation. And again, that's set forth on the record clearly. We also talked about if the tenant, or prospective tenant would come before the board as to intensity of use and we would be able to address any additional traffic flow, time, place, and manner at that time. We in addition, talked about conditions dealing with the snow removal easement and its relocation, subject to the board engineer and the mayor and council approval. Further, we talked about a condition of no outdoor storage. We talked about a condition dealing with the water main easement as per the board engineer's recommendation and ultimately the mayor and council. We in addition, talked about the concluding plan would have, render an as-is plan subject to the board engineer's approval incorporating the conditions that we set forth herein. We also talked about there would be no overnight parking or quartering or bedding of the particular delivery workers or any overnight bedding facilities whatsoever. Further, we had a second witness by way of the architect, Mr. Saunderson, who talked about the site and exhibits A5, the building rendering, A6, the floor plan, and A7, the building elevation. The architect also discussed the future possible HVAC. There was a good conversation and the ordinances as far as whether it would be a ground mounting screening or roof screening, and that's also set forth on the record and acknowledged. There was testimony received with regard to the nine dock doors, their location and the definition of warehouse and the satisfaction of the ordinances. In fact, there was also testimony of the applicant on the site plan addressing the campus-like setting of the project and comments from the public as far as Section 18-3.5 K6. The third witness, Mr. Kruger, the environmental consultant, talked about his environmental impact study and the prior uses at the property as well as the limitations that are acknowledged by ordinance and the chemicals that which may or may not be utilized. He also talked about the site environmental sensitivity level and that in his opinion, there's no critical area or area of environmental sensitivity that is not being addressed pursuant to law. We further talked about, again, the prohibition of certain chemicals, which was clearly set forth on the record. We also talked about that there would be no floor drains. We talked about there will be a, a sump area constructed at the end of the stormwater structure, so there would be the availability of testing if need be in case there was a specific problem. And the board engineer gave me some language as to that. Your board, again, based upon those three witnesses and the request for preliminary site plan approval, it would be proper if someone was to make a motion to approve the application for preliminary site plan approval, subject to the conditions I cited in case I missed any, as noted on the record.
I would like to also include any concessions that were made originally at the 9/17/2025 meeting relative to the platform that was, that was going to be closed in, Jumbo Block curb, that sort of thing. So anything that was, that was in, conceded to in that meeting as well, be brought into the resolution.
Good point, thank you. So if someone would.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second, please.
I'll second.
Ricky Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
No.
Okay.
And Chairwoman Les Lusiana?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Everybody have a nice evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for answering our questions. Huh?
My favorite thing to do.
I'm sure.
Yes, we're going to have a small, short recess while everyone turns over space. I think we're ready to bring it back.
Glad it's much smaller.
Right.
Okay, we're live. Okay. Onto our next hearing. PB number 25-738, Messer LLC, 20 Demarest Road, Block 12010, Lot 1, ED Zone, minor site plan. Time to act is by 11/20/25. We are well within that timeframe luckily. If you wouldn't mind.
Good evening, chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Castori of the law firm, Day Pitney LLP. It's liquefied, it turns it back to a gas to bottle, but yeah.
Counsel, any other questions?
I'll just stand up with you. Yeah, I think we hit most of the main points. Real quick, is the moving of the analyzers in any way gonna intensify the operations on the site?
No, it will not.
And you said, I'm sorry, you're replacing some, are you getting rid of the old system, or is that-
It's a great question, because we are keeping, so we're adding a building, and why aren't we getting rid of the old building? And to answer that question, so eventually, we will kind of remove the analytics out of the older building and use it as a driver interface building for them to, you know, be more efficient in loading and get into a computer station in there. But the other reason is because, for validating purposes, we have to run both systems in parallel for a couple weeks to validate for the FDA.
Sorry, Al, you took the wind out of my sails there. Yes, that's no more direct testimony, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have no other questions.
Bring it to our professionals.
Yes, Madam Chair and Board members, I did prepare a report dated October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Basically, I agree that what the applicant represented, this is not causing any additional variances that I'm aware of as far as the site goes. With regards to parking and circulation, as the applicant indicated, it's basically equipment that's replacing obsolete equipment, it's not bringing any additional employees or anything in that's gonna generate additional parking requirements. With regards to the storm drainage, the area of the proposed pad is less than five hundred square feet, so the amount of additional stormwater runoff would basically be de minimis as far as that's concerned. I'm not aware of any additional lighting that they're proposing?
No exterior lighting there, I think. There will be a small light inside the analyzer shed, so no exterior.
As far as the unit that is going to, the container that's going to house the equipment, as the applicant indicated, it is, as I understand it, going to be air conditioned?
That's correct.
Have a unit on it to maintain the temperature for the proper functioning of the equipment. There's no additional landscaping proposed around the unit. Again, it's in the middle of an existing developed site that they use for the carbon dioxide transfer and what have you. There's no water or septic additional requirements for the proposed installation. With regards to any signage, I'm not aware of any unless there's any warning signs required by code on the structure?
I don't believe there'll be any warning signs on the structure.
Okay. I did make a recommendation on the plans for detail to be provided to show the trench repair for the connection piping.
I do take back what I just said, there will be an atmospheric warning sign, there's an atmospheric alarm inside the structure. Since we do bring CO2 in, it's an exfixient, it's an inert exfixient, we will be putting a sign on the building, on the door, that says, you know, atmospheric warning, check lights before you go in, kind of thing.
So it'll have any warning signage in accordance with all applicable codes?
That's correct.
Okay. With regards to the environmental impact statement, one wasn't provided. Again, much like the previous application, this is also in the Germany Flats wellhead protection area, and I would just suggest that any approval that the board might consider have a condition restricting against the release of any of the hazardous materials into any drains or septic on the site, just to make sure the aquifer is protected.
We are a hundred percent would do that anyway and are agreeable to that condition.
Okay. Then as far as approvals go, we've got the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Township Construction Official, and as usual, what we recommend for a facility like this or any of the site plans upon completion, if the board approves it, that an as-built plan be prepared by the applicant's land surveyor.
We'd agree to that, and the fire protection, we did receive a letter and no comments.
And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Lindsay?
So just kind of a, this is just for my own, this wasn't on my letter, but, so the proposed building in comparison to the existing one, is it about the same size, smaller? Okay, and then so what is, so you just update the analyzer every X amount of years as like the, I guess like it gets antiquated in the technology?
Sure, the equipment gets obsolete to where you can't rebuild or have spare parts for any longer.
Got it.
Because the companies just don't make them.
Okay, and you said that they'll run, you said for three weeks at the same time where after about three, four weeks, the other one will be-
Two weeks, roughly, yeah.
Okay, and then the other one would be taken down, and you would have just the new one on the site?
Right, so we would have the new building, and then the old building, we're going to remove all the analytics out of it, ship that stuff out, and then use it as a driver interface building to where we put a, almost like an ATM-looking machine that interfaces with the new skid we put in.
Okay, got it, that's it, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, Lindsay, any other, you have a letter here from November fourth, any other points based on this letter?
No, I had basically, similar to David, I had asking about landscaping improvements, which there will not be any of, a lighting plan, which they are not changing any lighting, asked for kind of protective measures for the wellhead protection area, similar to what David said as well, and then finally, signage is proposed. The only item that I do have a question on will be for the other, the other witness, yes, thanks, Ken.
Okay, we will bring it up to the day of September.
Carbon dioxide is a gas that can combine with water in the atmosphere to produce acid rain, but what I really want to find out is how do you produce your carbon dioxide, or do you just package it under pressure, or, yeah, that was my question, and what chemicals could there be that you use that could possibly get into the well water?
So the only chemical or the only molecule we're bringing in is CO2. The CO2 that we're shipping in on rail, and have been for twenty years, is, it comes from our other plants, like Brandon, Mississippi, or Lima, Ohio, and usually we stage a plant next to a refinery, right? So we'll take feed gas off of a refinery, so instead of that refinery venting that CO2 to the atmosphere, you know, Messer recaptures that, cleans it, refrigerates it to a liquid, and then we ship it off to customers and bottle and stuff like that.
Okay, great. The Messer process?
What's that?
The Messer process, is that a process that you use for extraction from the, from refineries?
Yeah, that's, the main way we receive our CO2 is from offgassing of other companies that would otherwise go to the atmosphere.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your question.
Yeah.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Yeah, just a quick question. So this is a minor site plan to an existing site plan that was previously approved, so there's nothing in this minor site plan amendment that would modify any approvals or anything that was given on the original approval?
No, no modifications. The only modification is the pad and the shed on top of it, and inside the existing building where the analyzers are, those are gonna be taken out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for answering all those questions. Two questions. So when I crack open my Pepsi, I could say that the gas, and it really came from some refinery, possibly.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a scrubbing and cleaning process, but correct. That is correct, yeah.
How I'm helping.
Recycling.
And, when was the last time you pumped your septic?
I don't have that answer with me tonight, I do not.
Okay.
I can certainly get it, I can certainly get that answer.
No further questions, thanks.
Awesome. Okay, we'll open it up to the public for this witness? No, no questions? Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reichel. Would you like to bring up Mr. Borbus?
Yes, please. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The solemnly swear to tell the truth or affirm the truth at the best of your ability, and the penalty of perjury to the best of your ability, so help be God.
I do.
Good, thank you. Spell your last name for the record, please.
Name's James, middle name Peter, last name is Borbus, B O R B A S.
Borbus, you're a licensed professional planner?
Licensed professional planner and a licensed professional surveyor in state New Jersey.
Both licenses are in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Have you ever been accepted as a witness before the Sparta land use boards?
I don't recall being in front of Sparta, but many boards across New Jersey.
I'd recommend we accept Mr. Borbus as an expert in surveying and planning.
So accepted.
Counsel?
Yeah, so I don't know if we need to belabor any points that we've already made, if it may be a point of order, that if we could go straight to any questions from the board professionals, but if you'd like, Peter, to make a quick presentation?
Yeah, Peter, make a quick overview on that waiver issue, counsel, you mentioned-
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So the quick overview is that, which you've heard before, is an area of twelve point seven acres. There is an area that is developed for their operation, which is fenced, a security fencing around it. There's an impervious area of nineteen percent, which leaves about eighty-one percent of the lot to be wooded, brushed, and long, and I will comment that the, I'd like to comment that the, that Messer maintains this property. It is very clean, neat, and tidy. The, as was mentioned before, and there's a question as to the building coverage, the building coverage was in the square footages, but the percentage wasn't shown there, and that existing building coverage and the proposed building coverage are both less than zero point two percent. The impervious, right, I said the impervious coverage, we had, there's a maximum permitted of forty percent, and we're running nineteen percent, and we are not increasing the impervious coverage as the concrete pad and new unit will go on an existing paved area.
Mr. Borbus, just a focus before the engineers, there's an issue as far as possible waivers on proposed sign and details, also on protective covenants or deed restrictions, land reserved for public use, and also in the White Deer Plaza History District, we're in confirmation association that the plan complies with the Lake Mohawk Design Approved Standards, that was in our planner engineer review. Do you recall those issues?
I don't recall that, I did see that.
Maybe David or Lindsay can focus what-
With regards, I'm sorry, with regards to the completeness issues, proposed signs and details, my assumption based on the previous witness is that any particular signage that's required by building codes for the proposed installation will be installed. And with regards to any protective covenants or deed restrictions, is there anything involved on this particular piece of property? No, and in our search of what, and the deeds, we did- So we'll take feed gas off of a refinery. So instead of that refinery venting and that CO2 to the atmosphere, you know, Messer recaptures that, cleans it, refrigerates it to a liquid, and then we ship it off to customers in bottle and stuff like that.
Okay. Great. The Messer process?
What's that?
The Messer process? Is that a process that you use for extraction from the, from refineries?
Yeah. That's the main way we receive our CO2 is from offgassing of other companies that would otherwise go to the atmosphere.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
Yeah.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Yeah. Just a quick question. So this is a minor site plan to an existing site plan that was previously approved. So there's nothing in this minor site plan amendment that would modify any approvals or anything that was given on the original approval?
No, no modifications. The only modification is the pad and the shed on top of it. And inside the existing building where the analyzers are, those are going to be taken out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for answering all those questions. Two questions. So when I crack open my Pepsi, I could say that the gas, and it really came from some refinery possibly.
Yeah. There's a scrubbing and cleaning process, but correct. That is correct, yeah.
How I'm helping.
Recycling.
And when was the last time you pumped your septic?
I don't have that answer with me tonight. I do not.
Okay. No further questions?
I can certainly get that answer.
No further questions. Thanks.
Awesome. Yeah. Okay. We'll open it up to the public for this witness? No? No questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Raigle. Would you like to bring up Mr. Borbas?
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The solemn story to tell the truth or affirm the truth is at the best of your ability and the penalty of perjury is best of your ability, so hope you got it.
I do.
Good. Thank you. Spell your last name for the record, please.
My name is James, middle name Peter, last name is Borbas. B-O-R-B-A-S.
Borbas, you're a licensed professional planner?
Licensed professional planner and a licensed professional surveyor in the state of New Jersey. And New York.
Both licenses are in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Have you ever been accepted as a witness before the Sparta land use boards?
I don't recall being in front of Sparta, but many boards across New Jersey.
I'd recommend we accept Mr. Borbas as an expert in surveying and planning.
So accepted.
Counsel?
Yeah. So I don't know if we need to belabor any points that we've already made, if it may be a point of order, that if we could go straight to any questions from the board professionals. But if you'd like Peter to make a quick presentation?
Yeah. Peter, make a quick overview and that waiver issue, counsel, you mentioned.
Yes, absolutely.
So the quick overview is that, which you've heard before, is an area of 12.7 acres. There is an area that is developed for their operation, which is fenced, a security fencing around it. There's an impervious area of 19%, which leaves about 81% of the lot to be wooded, brushed, and longed. And I will comment that the, I'd like to comment that Messer maintains this property. It is very clean, neat, and tidy. The, as was mentioned before, and there's a question as to the building coverage, the building coverage was in the square footages, but the percentage wasn't shown there. And that existing building coverage and the proposed building coverage are both less than The impervious, right, I said the impervious coverage, we had, there's a maximum permitted of 40% and we're running 19% and we are not increasing the impervious coverage as the concrete pad and new unit will go on an existing paved area.
Mr. Borbas, just a focus before the engineers, there's an issue as far as possible waivers on proposed sign and details, also on protective covenants or deed restrictions, land reserved for public use, and also in the White Deer Plaza History District, we're in confirmation association that the plan complies with the Lake Mohawk Design Approved Standards. That was in our planner engineer review. Do you recall those issues?
I don't recall that. I did see that.
Maybe David or Lindsay can focus what...
With regards, I'm sorry, with regards to the completeness issues, proposed signs and details, my assumption based on the previous witness is that any particular signage that's required by building codes for the proposed installation will be installed. And with regards to any protective covenants or deed restrictions, is there anything involved on this particular piece of property?
No. And in our search of what, in the deeds, we did not see easements or covenants or restrictions on it.
Okay. With regards to land reserved for public use, as I looked at the site plan, basically you've either got the railroad or you've got your client's property.
That's it.
Okay. And with regards to White Deer Plaza Historical District, this is not in the White Deer Plaza.
Maybe Lindsay?
Yeah. I think maybe the waiver you were speaking about was noted in my letter, which is just that there should be a 10-foot wide of landscaping strip for parking areas in the front yard. It's an unusually shaped kind of area, so anything that is there is most likely in existing non-conforming condition, however, if you can, it would be...
Yeah. And so I'm trying to understand that. And the way that I read this is, as to the item of peripheral parking lot landscaping, a budding, a right-of-way requiring 10 feet of width of landscaping strip for parking areas in front yard. And that's the way it was read. And the front yard is, there's Demerus Road, and here's an office building, so this is our front yard. And the parking that we do have, there are six spaces right in front of the office building for car spacing. And that office is a little more than 500 feet set back from Demerus Road. And therefore, it'd be, in my opinion, that we, I don't know that the landscaping for 10 feet along Demerus Road, if that's the way I understand it, is really not worth doing anything for the screening for the parking spaces nearly 500 feet away from the road.
Yeah. So thank you, Peter. I think at the end of the day, we'll ask out of abundance of caution to seek the waiver, although we do not think it's necessarily required based on interpretation.
Sure. Do you have fencing around the property?
Yeah. So the fencing, as you come up the access roadway, everybody can see, you've got the access roadway coming up, there's a security gate, and around all their parking area and their infrastructure and their tanks, there's security fencing around that developed area.
Yeah. So I think the intention of the ordinance, right, is for some kind of screening, and I would assume that the fencing would kind of suffice for screening of the area.
I would say so.
And as counselor said, we'd note it as a waiver if applicable.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Porro. I think that's all we have on direct.
Any other questions from the rationals?
No. That's it.
That's it. All right. So we'll bring it to the dais. Councilman Scott? Any questions of this witness?
No. Glad to have learned a lot about this property. I always thought it was an immaculate property, and this is exactly the kind of properties that we want out there. And thanks for being a good citizen.
Thank you.
Mr. Day?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Only thing I'll add to Lindsay with the screening is, I drive by this property almost daily, and you can barely see it from the road. So even when you're up on Limecrest, looking down through the woods, you can't see it. Maybe in the winter a little bit, but...
Yeah, I would agree.
It's not visible.
And having driven by the property recently, as it was stated earlier, it's kept in really good shape. It's not a problem area.
Thank you.
I drove by this evening, and I agree.
Mr. Tumber?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. So we'll open it up to the public for this witness. Jenny, I can't see.
She's shaking her head.
Okay. Seeing none.
Okay, Jen.
Seeing none, I think we are ready for the crafting of a motion.
Okay, Board. You have before you application PB number 25-738 Messer LLC, 20 Demerus Road, Block 12010, Lot 1, ED Zone Minor Site Plan Approval. Applicant had two witnesses, a corporate representative and their professional planner, as set forth on the record. There was discussion as to possible waivers as set forth on the engineer and planners' report, and they are set forth as depicted. As far as conditions of approval, construction pursuant to the plan, we had Exhibit 1 on the site plan and as the board's customary, we would get an as-built plan at the conclusion. Is that okay, counsel?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, we also had Exhibit A1, as we discussed, and we discussed the 2003 site plan conditions would continue. That's basically all I have on my notes. If someone would move for an approval of that site, the minor site plan with the conditions and representations made on the record.
Mr. Porro, if I could just, prior to the motion, we have something here about, you know, prior approvals remain in effect, or is that not needed or...
Yeah. I did say 2002, 2003. Yes. You are correct. Yeah, Ron.
And I will make a motion to approve as read.
I'll second. Jeanette.
Birgit Bogler? Yes.
Jeanette Burke? Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Yes. And Chairwoman Celeste Luciano? Yes.
All right. Now, Board, we have something different tonight. What happened was the applicant has kind of a timeline to get through this. Counsel is a very good attorney. He had sent me yesterday a proposed resolution of approval, which I did not hand it out in any way, shape, or form to give an illusion or an appearance that you would prejudge this application. I am satisfied, though, with the resolution that he gave. I did also some revisions. I sent the copy to the lady chair and also to Dory. It has in the resolution, which I'm handing out now, compliance with the board engineer and board planners' suggestion. What the applicant is asking is if we memorialize their approval today so they can go forward. Here's your options. You can say, no, we gave you the approval. You'll have time to look at the resolution and prove it at the next meeting. But they can proceed at their own risk, which means they can go to the construction department and get a permit, let's say tomorrow, or you have no objection to that, assuming they comply with all the Uniform Construction Code. Or you can take a moment and take a look at this resolution. If you look at the last page, which is the, or the last two pages, Page 4, on the conditions, I have number one, the development of this partial subly implemented in accordance with the plan submitted and approved. Number two, applicant shall strictly adhere to the plan submitted, approved, excepted as amended on the testimony of the hearing. No deviations of any kind shall be permitted except of minor field changes, which are required by the board engineer. The board further agrees to retain jurisdiction as to approved terms and conditions regarding board engineer and planners' post-hearing interpretation of the same. Number three, payment of all fees, costs, escrows, and any monies to be paid within 20 days requested by the board secretary. Number four, certification that the taxes are paid. Number five, Sussex County Planning Board approval if necessary. Number six, the applicant shall be bound by their representations made tonight and incorporated into the record and shall be enforceable representations. And then the last page, subject to any other rules and regulations. We did put on the record, as Ron had pointed out, that I would add to this, the compliance with the 2003 resolution shall remain. And let's see, and the as-built plan I may already have in here. So if you wanted to pass this resolution with those amendments, you have the authority. What's your pleasure?
It's open for discussion.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
We do a roll call vote or a yea or nay?
Motion for a second?
I think we should do the resolution as proposed with the amendment, as I said, incorporating the 2003 site plan will continue and an as-built plan.
And this will be given resolution number 2025-23.
Good. Thanks, Dory. 2025-23. That's the last, I think, motion and second.
Okay. So if the motion has been made or will be made?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke? Yes. Ron Day?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Yes. And Chairwoman Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
All right. Good, counsel.
We highly appreciate the accommodation and hope everyone has a safe drive home.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
The Board, real quick, if this ever happens again, the protocol is that there should be a resolution approving it and a resolution denying it. So to have complete transparency, when I spoke to counsel, I said I'd take the approaches. I will not pass it out in advance, so there's no prejudice. And that's the protocol that we followed here tonight. Again, this is due to their urgency. It's not a normal course. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to jump down to the resolution so that we can get that passed for resolution 2025-22 for PB number 25-736, Sparta Smoke Shop and Mediterranean Cuisine, 514 Lafayette Road, Block 12008, Lot 17, PCD Zone, for the Smoke Shop and the Mediterranean Cuisine. So...
If you could, the resolution here is, it's got a lot on it because there's a lot going on in the site. What I mean by that is, you've got the resolution that the applicant is the title owner, 514 Lafayette Road LLC is the title owner. Then they have an operating entity called Papa's For Rentals LLC, but the application was really for the Sparta Smoke and Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine tenancy. And I think the nice thing about the resolution, it's really specific to those two tenants and the way the site works with them. If you look at the resolution, it's pretty detailed, going through the conditions that we talked about. And again, also the, also there was a prior resolution that's also carrying here. And we have quite a bit of oversight by our engineer and our planner, so I'm comfortable with the resolution as proposed.
Open for discussion? So motion to accept the resolution 2025-22 for PB number 25-736 as written.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll go.
That would be Christine Dunbar who seconded.
Dunbar.
And Dory, roll call, please.
We're going to do the Smoke Shop first, correct? Because we have two different roll calls.
Good point.
Yes.
Okay. So the Smoke Shop is first, so that's Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke? Yes. Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman? Oh, I'm so sorry. Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
And we'll do the Mediterranean Cuisine. We'll need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second. And then we have Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke? Yes. Ron Day?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar? Yes. And Chairwoman Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
And just for the record, Dory's right. If you look in the resolution, paragraph number seven, it says the board vote was 6 to 2 on the Smart and Mediterranean and 8 to 0 on the tenant, Sparta Smoke Shop. That's why, for the record, there were two separate votes. So we're good.
Okay. So I'm going to move back up to other board business. So before we get into ordinance 25-19, I want to briefly talk about our upcoming plans for next year. We've had, I've had a conversation with our current professionals, specifically our planner and our attorney. We'll be moving into a fair and open segment, which means that we will have an application out for 20 days. We'll be accepting applications. We hope that our current professionals will provide us their applications as well and be part of the process, at which time the board will then take whoever has applied and will review those documents and those applications and make plans for next year. That having been said, we can now move into the ordinance 25-19, excuse me, which is an ordinance of the Township of Sparta, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, to ban smoke shops and vape shops as a permitted use in any zone district and to regulate or restrict the sale of cannabis-derived products within the Township Master Plan Consistency Review. Excuse me. So we will open this topic up to discussion, but before that, I would really prefer to hear what our professionals may have to say about this particular topic.
I don't think it's very much engineering oriented.
Right. Exactly. But as it relates to master plan review, we do have Lindsay and we do have Ken.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's been previously a permitted use, right? There are permitted uses already existing within the municipality. Those would then be considered grandfathered in, I guess, under the current existing uses. As we start looking at uses for the new master plan, which wouldn't necessarily deal with this, you would have to go with what is currently existing in your master plan, and I don't think it necessarily touches specifically on the use of vape shops and smoke shops. I think these have become more prevalent in the past few years and probably were not contemplated in the previous reexamination report. Obviously, this is something we'll look at in the new master plan, but at this time, I don't think it's a specific use that has been contemplated. Definitely not in the comprehensive master plan, because that was written in the 80s, and vape shops most definitely did not exist in the 80s. And the reexamination report that was most recently done really just is looking at your objectives and if they are still valid today. So in many cases, they are still valid, but the use in particular hasn't been spoken about.
And just real quick, the ordinance contemplates a 0-milligram per serving acceptable. I'm just going to clarify with what our planner said, whether it's someone's grandfathered or not is not really within our scope right here. We're looking at the ordinance, and if the mayor and council pass it and they have retroactive, not retroactive, but if they, they want grandfathering, it's my professional opinion would be left to their determination or a court of law if the mayor and council decide not to grandfather and someone believes they're vested. Your function here is to look at the ordinance as referred to you, not making a legal opinion whether or not someone's grandfathered or not. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring it to the dais for discussion. Questions? Comments?
How does this ordinance relate to the fact that the state of New Jersey made cannabis
legal and there are categories that are very tightly controlled as to what types of shops? You can't, no delivery services, that sort of thing? I mean, I'm sure you know a lot more about that than I do. How does this relate to that? Because this also includes tobacco.
So cannabis is based on licenses that are issued by the state. Each municipality can determine whether or not cannabis is permitted, and they can also determine whether or not, what type of licenses and how many licenses that they would permit in their municipality. So that would be kind of step one. This is dealing also with kind of tobacco, which is also legal. So I think that that kind of, it creates an interesting situation because while vape shops are not going to be permitted wholly as just a vape shop, right, your 7-Eleven can still sell tobacco products. So it does create a little bit of, not necessarily an issue, but there are going to be the ability for tobacco products to still be sold in other places that are not just solely a vape shop or solely a smoke shop. So it's not going to be completely removed from the township.
What sort of legal challenges do you foresee with smaller businesses coming and saying, well, 7-Eleven is a very wealthy entity, produces a lot of revenue, and you're preventing me, small business owner, from establishing a tobacco shop, for example, because it also includes tobacco?
Sure. Mr. Porro would probably be better suited to answer the legal question regarding that.
Yeah. Just quickly, the, and I've been down this road in a number of other municipalities. The power of the municipality is pretty strong, and as the planner pointed out, the licensing through the state, really, the checklist, you have to get approval of the town. You have the referendum that you just passed that does give you... You have the referendum that you just passed that does give you directive of your community. But to answer the question raised, the tobacco, you could not prohibit tobacco in by the ordinance in a mom and pop store and say 7-Eleven is okay. It has to be uniform. So here in the proposed ordinance, it says compliance with, and they call it here, New Jersey Smoke Free Air Act and also other ordinances permitted municipalities to act. And here's important, which provides restrictions on or prohibits against smoking equivalent or greater than. So the municipality, again, has vast power, the mayor and council. It's just here for you whether or not this proposed ordinance is in compliance with our overall master plan and other ordinances. And again, the referendum that just passed, I think, sounds volumes on you have authority to do this if you wish.
So we have a cigar shop in town, cigars are made out of tobacco. If another person came in and said, I want to open up a cigar shop.
You can't discriminate. If if we allow cigar shops, I feel pretty comfortable defer to the borough attorney. But you can't discriminate one against the other just because 7-Eleven or the the other. So good comments. I think we can incorporate that to the mayor and council that if this is passed, that it should be uniform. And if you're gonna grandfather somebody, that may be improper for the future. So those are very good questions.
So I'm thinking about this in terms of what what the ask is, right? The ask is, is it consistent with the master plan, right? What I've heard here so far is that vape shops weren't conceived of in in the master plan. But tobacco, obviously, would have been. But if we look at this in terms of retail, right? Let's let's put it under under the retail umbrella. There are other types of establishments that we prohibit, but other than cannabis with its legalities, what else is it that falls under the retail umbrella that we prohibit?
So this, as you had properly said, if we scope it, what there what is the ask? You have an ordinance before you that says to ban smoke shops and vape shops as principal permitted uses in any zone district and to regulate, restrict the sale of cannabis-derived products within the town. That's the ordinance that's before you.
Right, so so, you know, within the confines of this. And the reason why I'm asking the question is because if we if we have a a scope of of retail items that that we normal, like, okay, we we prohibit gentlemen's clubs, we prohibit tattoo parlors, but those aren't along the lines of retail, right? If there's something else that's retail that we prohibit that I I can't think of if somebody else knows of who, you know.
Adult bookstores?
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
That's one.
That's that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for something else that falls under the the retail category that's potentially prohibited. Anything else that we can think of?
One question I had along this, I think along the same lines. So let's say vaping shop wanted to come into town. And they're gonna sell products, but they're also gonna sell a membership. So that membership is, I imagine, is a retail. And if the bulk of their if the bulk of their sales come from the membership as opposed to the sale of the products, would they then be allowed?
Interesting, because I believe that the I believe the the tobacco shop has that.
And that's and they're preexisting. So if I use that same model for vaping, are we really, you know, are we leaving that door open?
But I.
Is that not a question we have to address here?
Well, I think that that is proper to say to the the mayor and council that the ordinance, let's say, is acceptable, but you have concerns over the the scope of, you know, applying to a 7-Eleven versus a mom and pop. You have concerns over lounges and that those type of issues should be clarified in the mayor and council's final product.
Well, I mean, it's it's very clear here. It says that their principal use is tobacco. And 7-Eleven's principal use isn't tobacco. But I was alluding to the fact that there are some entities that have a heck of a lot of money to 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 challenge this and say, this is our principal use. And like Ron said, you know, we're we're selling memberships. I I'm I'm not.
Good point, good points.
I'm not convinced that this ordinance is gonna.
Say hypothetically, a restaurant came in and said, we're gonna have a cigar lounge in our restaurant, separate.
Right, what if it's a cigar bar? Where their primary sale is liquor. I mean, listen, we can we can, I guess, really what we what we're charged with doing, right? The ordinance is written, it's as written. So the determination needs to be is is what's sitting in front of us consistent with the master plan? If it's not, or if it is, are there any other outlying things that that we think that might give it more validity or more connectivity to the master plan? That that's the way I'm seeing it. I mean, I don't know how, you know, anybody else sees it differently.
I agree with this, Les. You know, I I think one area that, again, is a recommendation, because I think I know it sounds like what they're trying to do is really stop that standalone shops, the standalone businesses.
Right.
But but I think another concern that they may want to consider, and just just as more of a recommendation, is the window advertising. You know, like, you know, THC available here. For entities that don't have it as a primary function. I think that's an important thing they'd want to consider as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Poro, can you address the fact that the resolution, I'm sorry, the ballot question that was passed is nonbinding and how that affects this? I mean, what I'm just confused because I just don't understand the purpose of this ordinance, given the fact that the ballot question is nonbinding.
Good question. The if an ordinance is binding, the mayor and council basically said that whatever that determination determination is, we'd be bound by it. A nonbinding means that they take that recommendation. But as far as our purpose of whether it's in conformity with your community and what your goals are, that referendum, I think, is important here. And if you were to, I'm scoping back to the ordinance before you, if you were to say you're okay with the concept, but concerned over the scope and other issues such as time, place, and manner, which you have. What I mean by that is, should there be window advertisements? Should there be lounges, time, place, and manner? Should there be memberships? So that the 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 concept of this ordinance before you, you may find to be in conformity with your community values and master plan. But you are concerned to the mayor and council that they may want to clean it up as to the scope and addressing issues such as window advertisements, such as lounge, memberships. I hope that helped.
And as I understand it, Birgit, the reason that it was nonbinding is because you can't take a vote on a land use, as I understand it. I don't know if that's if that's the correct way to say it, Mr. Poro.
I'm not really an expert. I have a common sense approach to it, so I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
I have a concern that if towns around us put together membership clubs, retail spaces, that people in Sparta are going to drive to to do what they might want to do, because it's legal in the state of New Jersey. And then they're going to drive home, because we all know that, you know, we live in a place that is car-dependent. So then they're going to drive and get back into their car. And even though, you know, like, it's a big problem. It's a very big problem of people not only driving under the influence of THC if they have literally just ingested it, but we have big problem with people driving after having ingested alcohol. And, you know, I I I'm not sure that this ordinance is going to create the the safety to our residents that we think it it should? Or that it wasn't possibly intended to do?
So here's the thing, the purpose of this ordinance, right? This this ordinance was inceptioned based on the fact that we had three locations that were were gifting cannabis and selling cannabis illegally. And they have all since been shut down. And the the driver of this ordinance is to make sure that those types of facilities aren't there or aren't able to to crop back up. Because that ancillary side hustle business has has a tendency to exist in in those spaces. So that was the driver for this. Now, do all of those other issues need to be addressed? Yes, need to be addressed by the governing body, that's what we rely on Mark for. But what we're charged with right now is looking at this ordinance as written for master plan consistency. What I've heard right now is that there are other types of retail that we prohibit. Is it within our purview to to say, okay, you know what? It's it's consistent to prohibit certain types of of facilities? Yes, we can do this. Or no, this doesn't make sense, because vape shops were never conceived by the master plan. So how can we prohibit something that wasn't conceived by the master plan, right? These are the ways that we need to think about it. And when we vote, it's about consistency with the master plan. It's not about what the governing body needs to do on its end. It's what we need to do on ours.
What are we voting on? Whether it's consistent with the master plan or not?
Correct.
Okay, so that's it.
That's that's our purview.
And.
We have a master plan that mentions it, we don't, so.
Well, they're referring to the the original master plan, right?
We haven't seen the new master plan.
Well, if I if I could, you know, there is a level of in any master plan, and I'll refer to Lindsay, it has the the concept of goals and social values. And so therefore, you have your existing master plan, and I'll ask Lindsay to address that. But the referendum that just passed, your applications that had been before you, is this in line with the standards of the master plan and the recent developments, by the way, again, the referendum and approvals that you've come here and the direction you want for your municipality? I think you're all saying yes, but that you have some concern over the scope of this. And again, I know I'm repeating myself, that if I was to put together a response to the mayor and council, that you're okay with the consistency, it's in the social norms of the community, but you're concerned on public health, safety, and welfare of individuals under the influence. You're concerned about the lounge, memberships, window advertisement, again, time, place, and manner. And that is the way I would shape it if you so directed me.
Yeah, I think some of those things are outside of the scope of what it is that we're looking to do. I mean, we we have a liaison to the council sitting here and he's hearing us. So I I I feel that he can expand on that on council level. I I think we need to stay in our lane. I think we need to to do the do the job that we're here to do. Lindsay, you had some.
Yeah, so while we'll not say specifically in your master plan, right, smoke shops, there are pieces of your master plan that talk about kind of economic development and finding businesses that help your economy. And there's there's things where you say you want certain businesses in certain areas. And those types of things you can say are are not in line with your master plan. I think that's kind of what Ken was alluding to, is there are pieces in it where, you know, whether you you don't think this is necessarily a tax-ratable that's going to really help the economy in a really progressive way or vice versa, right? There's ways to go about saying the consistency. While it doesn't say smoke shop specifically, it could just not be in line with the goals of what you've wanted for businesses in Sparta.
Clarify it for any, does anybody else have any questions? It's out there. Yes, yes, it is. But but doesn't need to be in here.
Really, to me, it comes down to simply is, if I was to say it's not in performance, what part of it is it not gonna, can I point to that section that it's not in performance of this? And if I can't, I I believe it's it's conforming. You know, so unless unless I can find, here's where it doesn't, I don't know how I could vote anything but yes. But I also want to say in terms of, we've had this discussion with town council members in the past. And I think one of the things they asked us is, give us your answer. And if you have recommendations, let us know. And I so I think bringing the recommendations forward, I I think, is kind of answering the mail to what they've asked based on past discussions. But we'll, you know, give them a clear answer that we either believe it is or it isn't. And then they they can do what they want.
I am with you there.
So I can give you an idea of like just some of the kind of goals and objectives. So like, 1997, the Town Center Master Plan Amendment Goals, to establish a balance of land use is appropriately distributed based on identified need. Something like in the 2000 Master Plan Reexamination Report, there's examine the economic and commercial zone to provide for a cluster provision for open space opportunities and buffers between land use designations. 2002 Amendments to the Master Plan Goals and Objectives, maintain a sound fiscal balance of managing residential and commercial growth. So those are just kind of ideas of things that are within your goals and objectives of the previous master plans that could be used towards kind of different uses like that for retail purposes.
I think in the interest of time, we we should either decide whether or not we're going to vote on this or if if we're gonna.
I make a motion that we vote on ordinance 25-19 and indicating that we believe this is consistent with the master plan of Sparta, New Jersey.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Birgit Bogler.
No.
Jeanette Burke.
Do we need to clarify? Do we need to clarify on what we're voting? Okay, so the the motion as presented is that we are determining that 25-19 is consistent with the master plan. So if you vote no, you're saying you don't believe that it is consistent with the master plan. If you vote yes, you're saying that, yes, you do believe it's consistent with the master plan.
Okay, so another way of saying that.
Is there anything in there that's inconsistent?
Right, you can't. If you can't point to something.
So I believe another way of saying that is that if we walk out of it here to our cars and we see blinking lights and we see tattoo parlors and adult bookstores and liquor, you know, we do see liquor stores.
There are plenty of liquor stores.
Cannabis shops, and we see all these things blinking. And this is what our town is. Then maybe then maybe this this type of story is consistent with our master plan. But we walk outside and we don't see any of that, okay? And so this is consistent with our master plan, with the health, safety, and welfare, with the morals of Sparta. And it was said yesterday, two to one, that this is not what we want in our town. So I believe it's consistent with the master plan, whether it be the 1968 master plan or the whatever it was, 2002, whatever, I'm sorry.
Eighty-four.
Okay, whatever it was, right? Okay, so I believe this is consistent with the morals and values of this town and the master plan that everybody is working for.
With Ken's recommendations for signs and.
With Ken's recommendations, absolutely. And, you know.
Not my recommendation, my memorialization of what you guys did.
With the understanding that it's it's Mark's job to make sure that, you know, those recommendations are are discussed and and, you know, brought forward.
Absolutely.
That's, you know, that that's council discussion. But, you know, the unfortunate circumstances, the council's gonna do what the council's gonna do.
Right, that's right.
All right, so do we understand what we're voting on now?
I got it.
I've got, I found to have one more clarification.
Okay.
And we've said it, but I just want to hear it one more time. So what this says is any any any.
So what this says is any, any, any business out there now that has received a proper approval, this will not affect because they're all grandfathered.
All right, now Ron, the, that, I'm not giving a legal opinion on that. It's not that it's above our, whether or not there is a grandfathered of certain stores versus. I haven't made that legal or factual determination. So your decision is not whether other stores are grandfathered or not.
Yeah, that's tough part.
Right, that's, again, that, that's council issue, up to them to decide.
Yes.
Yes, the only thing we have to worry about is whether it's consistent with the master.
Correct, we stay in our lane.
That scope is irrelevant.
Okay, I think I'm ready to vote.
Got it, let's go.
We have our first or second. Birgit said no, now Jeanette.
Yes.
Ron Day.
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
And thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
One more question.
Okay, we are going to open it to the public really quickly. Just in case anybody has any, any questions for items that are not on the agenda. And we're gonna, I, I'm going to make a very quick update for our subcommittee master plan after we're done.
I got real quick, two things real quick. First of all, on the, on the CO for the vape, for the tobacco shop, it says handwritten big block letters, not to be used as a lounge. So the function that is going on there right now is illegal in terms of how it was approved. If that helps anybody to feel more comfortable about what you just said.
The vape shop?
No, the tobacco shop.
The tobacco shop.
The cigars.
The cigar, tobacco, whatever it's called. It says right on the approval for their CO, their application approval and their CO. Big block letters written across, you can't miss it. And the other thing is, Ken, um, it's actually Township of Sparta versus Spalene that established that a referendum can't overturn a land use ordinance. Sparta was the case.
Interesting, thank you. But it, but it does give a basis for the mayor and council to do an appropriate, yes. Yes, good point, thank you, yes.
I have an easy question. This might be more of a Dory question than anything else. I had, Dory, I had a question about getting notes about planning board meetings that the county was at back in 2002. And in that area, I did an Oprah request. And it was my understanding that they were reaching out to the planning board to get all of the documentation that I requested. It got punted to traffic for some reason. Should I just email you directly for what I'm looking for since it's notes and minutes and stuff like that from 2002 and a couple of.
Did an Oprah request already?
Yeah, I did, and some, and the answer I got, the answer I got was, well, our traffic bureau says that they don't have anything. I don't know why it got routed.
Come through us, but let me, let me go back and look at the Oprah you're referring to. But if you could send me an email as a reminder and I'll look into it.
Okay, and it's for a couple of different meetings that I'm looking for minutes plus also documentation that the county would have submitted regarding the change in traffic flow for Sparta Avenue between Quick Check and 181, the 517 bypass, as well as anything that would have been sent to Lake Mohawk regarding the impact on Pine Terrace, North Shore Trail, and South Shore Trail.
If they're application specific, they should be in our files. But if they're not application specific, you may have to go to the county.
The county, I've already gotten documentation. I've already reached out to the county. The county, in their documentation, said that they appeared before the planning board and that there was a subcommittee formed with, through the planning board of Sparta regarding the change in traffic.
Okay, email me tomorrow as you.
And I'd be, I'll attach the, the documentation that I already have from the county that says that you guys were involved. What's the average turnaround for that? Is it like 10 days or something?
For an Oprah request, we have seven days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very quickly, master plan subcommittee had their large-scale stakeholder meeting on October 29th. We had just over 50 participants, which was amazing. And we, we discussed every aspect of, of Sparta and what, you know, what people would like to see. We, we did an overarching, what is the master plan? Then broke into subgroups and, and had smaller conversations. This way, every participant had the opportunity to really expand on, on their opinions. All of that data was, was put together in notes. A lot of those notes that we went over at our last subcommittee meeting, which was this past Monday, were very well in alignment with, with the survey results, which, you know, wasn't, wasn't really a shocker. But we will be going into a larger presentation for all of the stakeholder meetings at our meeting on December 3rd, which brings me to, so the agenda actually says that our next meeting date is November 19th. That meeting is canceled because of the League of Municipalities. So our next meeting date will be the December 3rd meeting date where we will be discussing the, or presenting the results from all the stakeholder meetings that we've had thus far and, and the next steps in terms of goals and objectives and, and land use settlement and so on. And unless there is anything super brief from town council and environmental.
I've been away, there's no report.
Okay, so.
Real quick, anyone going down to the league? I will be speaking Tuesday morning at the Convention Center on Land Use. So if you're there, 9:00 a.m., please stop in. Thank you.
See you there. Okay, Ernie's not here to, to give us our motion for adjournment, so I'll, I'll leave it up to.
A motion to adjourn this wonderful meeting.
All in favor?
All right, thank you. So December 3rd is our next meeting.
Correct.
Same time?
Yes, same time.